Worldwide is diagnosed with cancer. So knowing that, it's our ability to step up as a community and first responders to raise funds to make sure that we can research childhood cancer. And we want to stop that out as much as we can so these kids can live a long and happy and healthy life.
This year alone, we've raised $19 million. We want to beat last year's amount of $20 million. And we're going to do it today because this is another example of why this community that I represent is so great, because they always come out to help.
Today is a great day for LAPD and LAFD to come out here to the Porter Ranch area, the San Fernando Valley, and really raise awareness for childhood cancer and raise funds for childhood cancer and to show our communities that we stand with them.
We have a lot of public entities here. We have a blood drive. We have our recruitment here to look for future firefighters and police officers. And we also have local businesses like The Habit is here, the Cancer Support Group, Firefighters First Credit Union, they're all here just to help us, support us with the foreign cause.
Whether it's $1, $5, $10, $100, every little bit helps help us reach our goals to help fight cancer and kids with cancer especially. So just thank you very much in advance and hope next year you'll join us out here in Porter Ranch.
El Pueblo, known as the birthplace of Los Angeles, hosted a Museum Day, which was organized by the interns. Interns from La Plaza de Cultura y Artes, the Chinese American Museum, the Museum of Social Justice, and El Pueblo collaborated on the event, which brought families out to have fun while learning more about LA's history.
You are currently in the beautiful El Pueblo Historical Monument. And we like to say that this is where Los Angeles was born. It's a place of respect, a place of history, and also a place of diversity. And many people doesn't know that this was the original Chinatown.
We're here to have Museum Day, which was put together in collaboration with the interns from El Pueblo, La Plaza, the Chinese American Museum, as well as the Museum of Social Justice.
We've been working all summer to organize this little arts and crafts activity free for the public, for kids in the area, to learn more about each organization.
We kind of just wanted to have an event that would bring kids and young families to understand the cultural legacy here. But it's been a really fun process to kind of explore like the different museums and learn about like our neighboring museums. And it's been really fun to work with other interns to plan something and really see it come to life today.
All of the interns were all part of a Getty Internship. And we all decided we wanted to do this for one day. It's the first ever time this El Pueblo has ever done this before. And we wanted it to just be a great opportunity for everyone to come and see and learn about the museums.
This was their project. How are they going to bring people together and especially bring youth together so that our telling of our history and our stories can continue to be passed on?
They should follow all of our organizations Instagrams and check out our websites, El Pueblo LA Instagrams. And that's where all of our updates and different events throughout the year are going to be posted.
I think it's very good because a lot of us, even though we've been here, we've lived here forever, sometimes we don't know what's around us.
This is a very, very beautiful place and everybody should come here and see this with us.
The Dodgers Foundation brought All-Star catcher Will Smith out of the ballpark and into the Felipe de Nieve branch of LA's Public Library to read to young Angelinos. It's safe to say that when it comes to encouraging reading, Smith hit a home run.
So today, we're here at Felipe de Nieve Library in downtown Los Angeles, together partnering with the library and the library foundation to host one of our LA Reads Storytimes. LA Reads is our initiative to get kids really building a lifelong love of reading and exciting kids around readings. And part of that series, every single season for us, is actually doing Storytimes at local libraries, recreation centers, schools, you name it. So today, we've welcomed a number of kids here for a summer Storytime featuring our Dodger All-Star catcher, Will Smith.
Who likes reading? Raise your hand. A nice children's book, just stressed the importance of reading, reading at a young age and just enjoying it. And they're lighting up, seeing a player from the Dodgers come in. That made my day as well. So it's just a special day and a special way to kind of get back in the community.
I think it is really great for the kids to be able to bring a lot of like these community faces to like these communities, especially like Westlake, where the kids need that, especially being right next to the park. So I think that's why this partnership is so important because ultimately our goal was to get kids to continue reading for the summer when they're not in school.
I remember as a kid, you know, you go to the library, read books. You know, I never had the experience of a professional athlete or somebody reading to me, you know, seeing them just tune into a book, as simple as that.
I think that it definitely shows the importance of like literature in all aspects, right? I mean, like you're so, it's so easy to see that the players are out there and they're being active and they're doing all these things. But it also brings back the importance of literature and importance of literacy.
Our mission at the Dodgers Foundation is really to tackle LA's most pressing problems, but access and opportunity is so important. And so for me today, I have a smile on my face because I feel like we are bringing awareness to reading. We're providing a free book, Without Equality, which is a book actually written by Dodger owner and tennis legend Billie Jean King. It's just special to me that this access and opportunity is something that we're able to provide. It's really a blessing to be carrying this name of, you know, the Dodger brand.
LAPL blue, Dodger blue, so it's gonna, it's like we're finally all here together, you know?
California State Treasurer Fiona Ma is the banker for the Golden State. I sat down with her and learned more about her work and the funding that drives our economy. I am delighted to be joined today by the California State Treasurer Fiona Ma. What is the state treasurer's office responsible for?
So I'm the banker. All the money comes into my office. I also invest the state's short-term portfolio, as well as the short-term investments for about 2,300 local government units. And I also sell all the bonds for the state of California, the UC and the CSU system. So that's like the banking side. Then over the years, I don't know if you remember Speaker Jess Unruh, when he became treasurer, he said, oh my God, we're sitting on so much money, we should be doing more. So now I fund and finance affordable housing, public transportation, schools, green energy, carbonogen recycling, advanced manufacturing. I oversee four savings programs, and that's just within the treasurer's office.
And actually, when you were elected state treasurer, you made history for a few reasons. First of all, you mentioned one of those very upfront. You're a CPA by trade. You were the first woman of color in that position. And you actually won by a huge amount of the vote.
I think the voters appreciate that I do have an accounting and finance background. But because of everything I've been doing, I know where the pots of money are. I know who to call to get things done. I came from the private sector and now in the public sector, so focused on streamlining and making things easier for the constituents. And I go around the state. I love to travel. I go everywhere and post everything that's amazing about this state.
What have you found to be the thing that people don't really know as well as they should about what the California State Treasurer's office can and cannot do?
Yeah, so we offer a lot of resources through my office, whether it's small business loans. We've rolled out a lot of grants during the pandemic. We issue bonds. And so a lot of people don't know that if you need money, maybe come to my office and we can help you, guide you, steer you, advise you, right? And so that is what I've been doing.
All right, so if someone wants to find out about the treasurer's office and find out what you're doing and find out how they can access some of these programs that you have so generously shared with us today, what's the best way for people to find out?
Yep, my website is www.treasurer.ca.gov. Everything is on my website.
Well, it's been a pleasure chatting with you. This has been really, really wonderful. Thank you and come back.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria.
In this week's Things to Do, La Merck Park Jazz Festival is at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Mall. The Pope's Astronomer visits LA's Central Library. Open house at Cabrillo Marine Aquarium. All this up next on Things to Do. Jazz lovers, this one's for you. The Fourth Annual La Merck Park Jazz Festival is where you can enjoy jazz bands and artists at the Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Mall. Join fellow jazz enthusiasts at this free festival, which will feature live performances by four-time Grammy winner Stanley Clarke, Carmen Lundey, Poncho Sanchez, and many more. Check out the Kid Zone, marketplace, and food court at this community-focused event. La Merck Park Jazz Festival takes place on the rooftop parking deck of Baldwin Hills Crenshaw Mall on Saturday, August 26th, from 12:30 to 9:00 PM. For more details, go to lamerkparkjazzfestival.com. The LA Public Library presents the inaugural Amelia Earhart Lecture on Adventure and Exploration. This talk is presented by the Pope's Astronomer, Brother Guy Consolmagno of the Vatican Observatory. The lecture will examine why stories are fundamental to the understanding of both science and religion. Learn how the way we tell our stories influences how we think about big ideas. Astronomy and Faith with Brother Consolmagno takes place on Sunday, August 27th at 1:30 PM at LA Public Library's Mark Taper Auditorium. Space is limited, so registration is encouraged. Log on to lapl.org/events for more information. Join the Cabrillo Marine Aquarium educators to learn about the Salinas de San Pedro wetland habitat at Cabrillo Beach. You'll be given binoculars and microscopes to observe live animals in their natural habitat. Visitors can view the birds of the marsh, learn about native plants, and observe the changes in the tides. The Salt Marsh Open House is free and open to all ages. Be there Sunday, August 27th at 11:00 AM. See more on cabriomarineacquarium.org. And that's a look at some things to do. From all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. You can catch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, August 18th, 2023, and we're ready to call the meeting to order. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the Council. Public comment will be taken today, both in person in the council chamber and via teleconference. And we are ready to begin. So Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Bloomfield, DeLeon, Harris, Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Part, Price, Brahmin, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavsky, 11 members present and a core, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of minutes of August 16, 2023.
Councilmember Hernandez moves. Councilmember Bloomfield seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Yaroslavsky moves. Councilmember Padilla seconds, next. If we could please run through the agenda.
Yes, sir. There is a request to hold item one on the desk. And items one through 12 are items which public hearings have been held. For item number 11, the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee report, as well as the Joint Housing and Homelessness and Government Operations Committee report, have been submitted and are online under Council File 23-0792. Note that for item 12, the Trade, Travel, and Tourism Committee report has been submitted and is online under Council File 23-0824. Items 13 through 15 are items which public hearings have been held. For item 13, the Northridge East, the Encino, and the Greater Toluca Lake Neighborhood Councils submitted community impact statements in support. 10 votes are required for consideration, sir.
All right, members, those items are now before us. Do any members wish to call any of those items special? Councilmember Hernandez.
Council President, I would like to call item 11 special for comments, please. Thank you.
All right. Any other specials, members? Councilmember Padilla.
Item six.
Item number six.
I would like to call item six special, please.
Okay. For an amendment?
And I'd like to introduce a friendly amendment.
Okay, very good. Do you want to go ahead and state the amendment now?
Yes, I would like to instruct the Department of Recreation and Parks that the citywide skate park advisory group shall be comprised of a minimum of one member from each council district, and selection of members shall be in consultation with the council offices.
Is there a second to this motion?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other specials, members? All right, then, Madam Clerk, with that, what items are now before us that we can vote on?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items two through five, as well as seven through 10, and 12, sir.
All right, members, those items are now before us. I see no members wishing to be heard, so let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Very good. With that, I'd like to... Okay, before we go to our presentations, I understand that there's a couple of announcements. Councilmember Hernandez, did you have an announcement you'd like to make? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'd like to give a warm welcome to some special guests we have joining us today. Los Angeles is home to the second-largest community of Sri Lankans in the United States. LA City Council first declared Sri Lanka Day on August 17th, 2020. Known as the Pearl of the Indian Ocean, Sri Lanka is an island nation with a vibrant culture rich in tradition. Today, they are having a Sri Lanka Day celebration to honor their food, culture, and history. The Sri Lanka Foundation, whose offices are in CD1, invite you to celebrate this day with Sri Lankan food at 11:00 AM and a dance performance at 11:30, both taking place in the forecourt. Please join them in this celebration. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. And next, Councilmember DeLeon, do you have an announcement?
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I have the pleasure of introducing a few folks. For those who go to Bull Heights and frequent a bar known as Chelas, which is not far from Plaza Mariachi, which is on First Street, it is an amazing bar. In fact, there's a handful of staffers, as well to, to my understanding, frequent this one particular bar. And let me say that Chelas was founded by Coriza Hernandez Paredes, as well as Gabe Paredes, both from northeast LA, and Dominic Saldana. It has been a staple in the community of Bull Heights since September 14th, 2018. For many in the neighborhood, it's become a home away from home and a place to laugh, to dance, and to build lasting relationships. Chelas has also been a haven of safety and inclusivity for every individual who has walked through that door. This impact has been possible because of Chelas' dedicated and exceptional team led, again, by Coriza Hernandez from Highland Park and Gabe Paredes of Bull Heights, or I should say, reverse it, one from Bull Heights, the other from Highland Park. Chelas will forever live in Bull Heights, collective memory, as a testament to the beautiful and resilience of the neighborhood. I just want to say to Coriza, to Gabe, and to Tony, and to Dominic, thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts. We'll be giving you a proclamation, a resolution. You guys are incredible. They do own nativos on York in Highland Park, which is still open right now. But let's just give it up, colleagues, for our very own Chelas. Coriza. Lastly, Mr. President, I have the honor to also recognize a delegation...
One moment, Mr. DeLeon, please. To the members of our audience here, there will be no disruptions of the meeting. The two people standing in the back of the room, you will not shout out when... The two people standing in the back of the room, you will not shout out when a council member is speaking. You will not shout out and disturb this meeting under any circumstances, no matter how important the thing is that you think you want to shout out you think is. And you will be excluded from this meeting if you continue to disrupt. Mr. Grabner, I am not going to warn you again. Be quiet throughout this meeting unless you're standing at that podium, speaking into the microphone. There will be no disruptions of this meeting. That's the only warning I'm giving any of you. Mr. DeLeon, proceed.
Thank you much, Mr. President. Again, colleagues, it's with great pleasure that... Again, let me start once again. It's with great pleasure that I introduce a delegation from, not from Peru, but from...
Sergeant, I'm sorry, Mr. De... Sergeant, is that Mr. Grabner speaking out after I just warned him? Mr. Grabner, you ordered removed from the meeting pursuant to Rule 12. You'll be subject to Rule 7. For everyone else who's here, there will be no disruptions of this meeting, period, full stop. Mr. DeLeon.
Thank you very much, again, Mr. President Krikorian. It is an honor to introduce a delegation of Peruvian Americans. When we were under recess, we didn't have an opportunity to celebrate the 202 years of independence of this great country, the country of Peru, which celebrated their independence on July 28th of last month. Mr. President, as well as colleagues, today we have with us the Consul General representing the government of Peru, Jose Luis Chavez. We also have the President of the Peru Village, Carmen Stewart, with us today, and we also have one of the main organizers, Abel Sanchez, who brought us together. This is a nation that has been on this planet for 202 years of independence, and Peruvian Americans have contributed greatly to our economy and is one of the best gastronomies in the entire world. In fact, to my understanding, they have the number-one rated restaurants in the world, which is located in Peru. It's the best ceviche anywhere in this world. It's El Peruano Ceviche, some lugar de las, you know, in my opinion. I'll get some criticism from some folks with that, but I've tried it plenty of times, and it is the number-one ceviche. And I had an opportunity to go to Peru, leading California delegation at the Conference of Parties United Nations when we dealt with the issue of climate change. I want to celebrate the Peruvian people, council members, let's give a warm applause for our delegation here, representing Peruvian Americans, and the 202nd independent, you know, anniversary of the Peruvian country. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. DeLeon, and I want to also welcome and congratulate the Peruvian delegation for being here to celebrate. As an avid enthusiast of all the multicultural cuisine of Latino communities, what I think is very special, I think about, one of the most treasured Peruvian gifts is Gustana Currio, a celebrated chef who has brought indigenous cuisine and brought it to the forefront of what is most celebrated about Peru. Now, I can't say that I've had guinea pig, but I've had a lot of other wonderful, you know, experiences with Peruvian cuisine, and I just want to say thank you so much for being here, for your contributions to what makes Los Angeles a unique Latino capital of the world in celebrating all of the rich cultural heritage that you all bring. Congratulations. Happy Peruvian Day.
Yes, Mr. DeLeon.
For those who like pisco sours, there's some pisco sours in the back right now.
Thank you. We're delighted to welcome you to our council chambers. Next, we will go to our presentations, and I'd like to call on Councilmember Hutt and Councilmember Harris-Dawson for a special presentation today.
Everybody here? Where's my colleague? Oh, there you are. Come on in, come on in. We can make it.
We can make it work?
We can make it.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Everybody here? All right. Good morning, Council President and colleagues and guests. If you didn't know, August is Black Business Month, a time where we get to recognize the indelible impact of black businesses and the contributions they bring to the city of Los Angeles. As we celebrate this month, I'm excited to be here with you today as we honor and celebrate an organization that's been an integral part of our community, the Black Business Association. It was founded in 1970, commonly known as the BBA, and it's the oldest active ethnic business organization in the state of California. The organization is committed to advocating and promoting the development of African-American-owned businesses with the goal of creating a firm economic base that supports the self-determination and survival of the African-American and urban community. By providing unwavering support to black-owned businesses, offering opportunities for black-owned businesses to network and connect, and helping them overcome challenges and thrive in a competitive market, the BBA empowers our community. As we celebrate the Black Business Association, I'd like to let everyone know about a free public event happening this weekend, and if you look up on the monitors, you'll see it. Tomorrow, on August 19th, in partnership with the BBA, we will be having the first annual Black Business Day Empowerment Fair outside of Harold &amp; Bell's Restaurant right on Jefferson and 10th Avenue. The event is free to attend and will be an empowering experience for everyone. There'll be food and an opportunity to network with businesses in our community. So let's celebrate Black Business Day. And now, I would like to bring up my colleague and big brother, little brother, on the council, Councilwoman Marquise Harris-Dawson. I forgot to bring up my business. Wait, I'm reading too much, not enough. I forgot to bring up Sarah Harris, the President of the BPA, to say a few words. Sarah? Sarah, about that? No problem, go ahead.
Thank you. It is such an honor. We are so happy and grateful. This is 36 years in the making. Our illustrious, longest-serving president, Mr. Earl Skipkrooper, first had the foresight to have Black Business Day proclaimed in the city of Los Angeles, and Mayor Tom Bradley then proclaimed it at that time. Also, too, I'm kind of giddy because today's my birthday, and...
Happy birthday!
Thank you!
That's awesome!
But the amazing thing is that 36 years ago today, the BBA partnered with Black Enterprise Magazine, and at the time, they were celebrating the top 100. And also, too, it was proclaimed on August 18th, so 36 years to the day of Black Enterprise Day, as well as Black Business Day. And so, this is something that was dug up, and it's just something that was so apropos that it is happening today. And so, we're just honored here, and we do hope, and we see many of you that will come out with us today. The BBA is forging on, and we love for you to stay in touch at bbala.org. Thank you so much to Councilwoman Hutt and everybody here who helped to bring this together. We're so honored that you helped to push this through. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah, and happy birthday. That's why I flubbed, so we could be like, it's Sarah's birthday. So to the BBA, I want to give you this certificate of recognition. For all the years that you have really supported the black community, black businesses, and the contribution to Los Angeles. It's signed by everybody, including our mayor. And now I want to pass it to my colleague.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Some of our board members here, too. I'm hogging the show. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and another round of applause for Councilmember Hutt for bringing this presentation to us today. On 818 Day, we're proud to also celebrate African-American Business Day. The businesses that we have with us today from the 8th Council District and around South LA are very special to me, and a lot of you will remember them. They are restaurants in South LA that during the pandemic stepped up and worked with the city to deliver meals to seniors. They were able to make sure someone was looking in on folks during that very, very difficult time of the pandemic. They were able to keep their workers on, so people who were servers became drivers to deliver meals to families. And I'm very, very proud to say each and every one of those restaurants survived the pandemic and is in business today, serving our community, hiring workers, providing jobs, and making the quality of all of our lives better. I want to point out a few of them. We have from Post &amp; Beam. Roni Cleveland, we have from the world-famous Dulenz Restaurant. Mr. Greg Dulenz is with us. There he is. From Tal's Cafe, James Taylor is with us. Tyler, sorry. Don't mess up my food when I go over to Tal's. And from South LA Cafe, again, one of the stars during this time period, Celia and Joe Ward Wallace are with us today. Let's give them a big round of applause. I want to make fun of Joe, because he just told me he was a firefighter with LAFD for 22 years, and he did not once come into City Hall chambers. And so, you start a coffee shop, and here you are. We just want to recognize them for their work. Like a lot of walks of life in this country for African-Americans, you've got to figure out a different path to get stuff done. And so, I was excited this past year, at the Natural History Museum in Exposition Park, there was a contract, or an RFP, to be the restaurant. And if you grew up going to the Natural History Museum, you remember, as a kid, you'd get off the bus and you'd go there, and you'd go in, and there'd be a McDonald's, right? And you'd be excited about going through the exhibits, and at the end, you'd get McDonald's. Well, the contract for that space was up, and our restaurants got together, and it worked out that no one restaurant had everything you needed in order to be competitive for that contract. And so, they put together a group as restaurants, and they applied together, and they were able to win that contract. So now, when you go to the museum and you get food, you'll get some combination of, I think you'll get coffee from South LA Cafe, you might get a sandwich from Post &amp; Beam, but the point is, it'll be food from our neighborhood by businesses that are operating there. And so, we're very, very excited about the work that they have done, but also what they will do, and thank them so much, and congratulations on Black Business Day. I'm going to pick one of you to come up and present. I'm looking at you, Mr. LAFD, to come up and say a few words on behalf of our businesses in South LA.
You should have had the media trained person. Oh, my God, thank you for that. I appreciate it very much. And just so you guys understand, this was hard work to get this done. I think we all know that. And whenever you have a big, huge project like this, and you have so many people involved, there's also other people on the outside going, "How are you going to do that?" Well, we came together, which was a little bit, getting a little emotional here, we came together and got this done. And, I mean, I could drop the mic on that. We came together and got this done, with all of us. So, thank you.
All right, so now we're going to hear from Post &amp; Beam, Mr. Cleveland, come on up.
Putting you on the spot. You're on. Put me on the spot. It's an honor to be here. Thank you so much, Councilmember Marquise Dawson, and my family has truly been welcomed in the district and in South LA. I take a lot of pride in saying that I married into LA, and my wife's beautiful family welcomed me into this neighborhood, and getting through the pandemic and being here with you all and getting new contracts and creating new partnerships and the amount of jobs that we're creating together is incredible. We're just beginning, and thank you for the award and honor to be here.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson. He mentioned that we survived during the pandemic, but it was primarily in part because of him. So, we're grateful for him. I'm grateful to be a South Los Angeles native, and just thank you for everybody being here and supporting us.
All right, Tal's?
Well, I just want to thank Marquise Dawson, also James, and my big brother here, Antoine, who's the one that was inspired to take over Tal's Cafe. We grew up in the neighborhood since we was kids, and it's just an honor to be able to serve the community now, and even have Marquise Dawson come in and have brunch and actually like the place. So, it's just the beginning, but it's also, like I said, it's motivation. Also, Dulenz and everybody else, these are places that we've been to our whole life, you know, as kids. So, it just feels good to be able to give back and be able to grow and then learn from everyone else. So, we appreciate it, and we also appreciate all the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. And to close, along with Harold &amp; Bell's, the dean of black restaurants in Southern California, from the world-famous Dulenz, Mr. Greg Dulenz.
I'm not that old. I'm not that old. I'm just proud to be here, and thank you, Marquise and Heather, for the recognition. Proud, second-generation restaurateur. My dad started the business 47 years ago, and we're still investing in the community. We're remodeling one of our original locations, which will be open in about 60 days, and I'm just very, very proud and happy to be here. Thank you very much.
Okay, so first of all, I believe these restaurants are in what I call the 810. They're the 8th district, but we certainly, in the 10th district, patronize, and we're happy about the ones that are in the 10th, right? It is so good to see our businesses grow and thrive, especially through the hard times that we had. And just to let you know how proud I am, Greg and I went to junior high and high school together, and he was a James Beard nominee this year, so we are super proud of the work that he's doing now. I believe now it's time for you to do your plaques, right? And thank you all. Yeah, you do. And thank you all for the work that you do.
Councilmember Hutt?
Yes.
If I can, please?
Please, Mr. President.
I want to recognize members who wish to be heard, and we'll start with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's wonderful to have South LA's greatest eateries in the house this morning, and I want to thank Mr. Harris-Dawson and Ms. Hutt for bringing you all in. It feels generational when you talk about, from Harold &amp; Bell's to Post &amp; Beam to South LA Cafe, all of which I've had, okay, and have enjoyed. I remember going with my buddy Butch Grimes for the first time to Harold &amp; Bell's and getting, you know, like, gosh, I think it must have been about 15, 20 years ago or so, you know, and just all of the evolution of food coming out of South LA has been remarkable. I had the privilege, it popped up in my memories on social media, I think it was about eight years or so ago, when Local came on the scene in Watts. And I was working on that with Roy Choi, with Akila, to help make that happen. And I remember when it was just an exciting dream, and I was part of that crowdsourcing effort to help fundraise, because I said, "This is what Watts needs. We need to have good food establishments that bring community together." And on a day when we celebrate Peruvian contributions and black businesses in Los Angeles, this is who we are in LA. And so, it's just really wonderful to have you all here. Thank you as the council foodie. Thank you as the council foodie. I want to say, keep doing what you're doing. Love it. Love what you all bring. And I love just the evolution and I, you know, I was happy to see South LA Cafe being at the Hollywood Bowl, for example. The reach is amazing and I love the coalition building that your businesses have brought. It's an example that is also modeled in Mr. De Leon's district at Milpa Cafe, where everybody is bringing together, you know, as small individuals come together, make a powerful force for change and economic opportunity in the community. So I just want to say thank you all so much for being here today. Thank you for going through that struggle because, you know, I know it's hard. We're trying to make it easier, but we appreciate you, your resiliency to persevere and create these changing environments in neighborhoods that are no different than mine, that so often get overlooked, but together our economic power is unstoppable. So thank you so much for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hutt, Councilmember Harris-Dawson, I just want to thank you for this presentation and thank you for bringing in the Black Business Association and all of these individual business owners. You know, it's not often enough that we have business owners, especially small business owners, in this council chambers. We hear from, you know, all sorts of different advocacy groups and stakeholders around this city, but we don't hear enough from small business owners because small business owners are always busy running their small businesses and making sure they're putting food on the table for their family, making sure that they're providing new jobs and opportunities for people, making sure that they have a thriving business like so many of yours that helped define communities and in a generational way helped to provide, you know, centers of neighborhoods and places where people celebrate and enjoy one another and one another's company and enjoy what's unique about each neighborhood in this great city. And it's small business owners who do that. And so as we celebrate all of you and as we recognize the Black Business Association, I'd like to welcome you to come back frequently. And I'd like
Bring food.
Yes, indeed. But also I want to urge all of us to remember the people who are standing here being recognized today. When we make policies that affect businesses, when we do the work that we need to do to help stimulate the economy and create new jobs, or when we take actions which maybe might affect businesses adversely, I hope that we will all remember that it's not just the big corporations of the world that we're talking about. It's the people who are standing right here at this microphone, at this podium right now, who are creating jobs, who are trying their best in a very difficult environment to make dreams come true for their family and for other people's families by creating and encouraging business here in Los Angeles. And so thank you all for your resiliency through some of the most difficult times that businesses have faced in this city since the Great Depression. Thank you for continuing to believe in the future of Los Angeles and for inspiring us as well because of your commitment and your resiliency. It's a great pleasure to have you all here today.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So for each of the restaurants, we prepared a certificate of recognition that we're handing out to each of the restaurants and we'll now do our famous photo op.
All right. Thank you all very much. With that, we are ready to move to the public comment portion of our meeting. So Madam Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read in our instructions relating to public comment.
Yes, sir. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the building, into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press *6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press *6 to unmute.
To members of the public, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute for general public comment. Speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not speaking on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are speaking on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. If you do not immediately get clearly on topic, or again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment are 6 and 13 through 15. For members of the public calling in to speak, when it is your turn, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press *6 to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. If you do not immediately unmute yourself when prompted by council staff, you will forfeit your time and we will move on to the next speaker. If you are listening to the meeting on your computer, channel 35, or another device, please turn down those devices, the volume on those devices immediately when it is your turn to speak. Because of feedback and a time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, it will cause a lot of confusion if you continue to listen on those devices. Finally, for our callers, please keep an ear to the phone so you know when it is your turn to speak. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We're ready to begin. I'm going to call out a number of names. As I call your name, please make your way to your left-hand side of the chamber so that our sergeants can direct you to the podium. I'm going to call Susanna Moncada, Maria Ponce de Leon, Maria Cibrian, Julia Nicolas, and Maurice Littles, please.
Muy buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Susanna Moncada. Y venimos a apoyar el proyecto de la alcaldesa Karen Bass. A comprar el hotel que bien necesario para nuestra gente que vive en la calle.
Our interpreter is a little hard to hear. If you could please speak up and speak directly into the mic a little bit.
All right.
Thank you. That's better.
When you approve this project, estamos ayudando a mucha gente que vive en la calle. That live in the street. En lo cual también les vamos a poder ayudar con la salud mental. And people with mental problems, mental health. Sabemos que son personas que son dignas de tener un lugar. Are worthy to have a place. En el cual se lo merecen. That they deserve. Yo sé que podría ser mucho dinero. I know that I could make a lot of money. Pero a la vez, sabemos que estamos At the same time, I know that we ayudando a nuestras comunidades. Are helping our communities. Clínica Monsignor Romero. Clínica Monsignor Romero. Por 40 años For 40 years. Ha estado prestando servicio a nuestras comunidades. Has been giving services to our communities.
Thank you.
Espero que este proyecto nos ayude a ustedes.
Speaker, your time is expired.
Porque su mano está todo. Gracias.
Thank you. And can I ask your name again, please?
A su nombre otra vez.
Su nombre?
Susanna Moncada. Susanna Moncada.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please
Good morning. Buenos dias a todos.
If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under.
Mi nombre es Maria Ponce de Leon. Soy promotora de salud de Clínica Monsignor Romero. Of the Clinic Monsignor Romero. Aquí estamos para apoyar To support La proposición de la alcaldesa Karen Bass. Como promotora en las calles As a promoter in the streets Vemos la necesidad We see the necessity Que tienen todas las personas que están sin hogar. That are homeless. Hemos visto familias durmiendo en los parques y en sus carros. Así que sabemos que todas estas personas These persons Necesitan Tener un lugar digno donde se puedan bañar To be able to bathe themselves. Donde puedan dormir. Where they can sleep. Sin problemas de ser dañados o tener algún problema en las calles. To have any problems in the streets. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Maurice Littles. I'm here with SEIU 2015. And we're here to promote number 11. And I just want to bring you up to update some of the stories that I have my own. I've been a caregiver since 2002. I took care of my mom until she passed in 2017 at 98 years old. And I'm taking care of my father now, who is 96. And in the time that we've been here, I myself am a vet and a caregiver for IHS. And during the time I've been with IHS, I have found out that some of my sisters and brothers, even though they had clients, was living out of their cars. And to me, I was shocked and ashamed to even think that that would be happening in the city, one of the greatest cities in the world. And we need to do something about that. And if this is a positive move toward doing that, I'm supporting it 100%. And I wish that all my council members and everyone would get behind it and do the same. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And as our next speaker is coming forward, I'm going to call a few more names. Rachel Lewis, Alicia Vasquez, Natalia Lozada, Lauren Natalie, Robert Fields, and Mark Dyer, please. Good morning.
Buenos dias a todos.
Good morning, everyone.
Mi nombre es Maria Cibrian. Soy una proveedora de cuidado en casa.
My name is Maria Cibrian. And I'm a provider. For 22 years, I live in the area of San Fernando. And I come here today to support The project for Alcaldeza. To be able to obtain this hotel. Because all of the people, many times, we generalize them, but we really don't know specifically which is the situation of every person that is on the street homeless. Maybe they lost their job, maybe economic, it's very important that we all have a right to have a roof over our heads. So we're here in support of these people to do this hotel so that they don't live in the street. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our interpreter to please remind speakers to pause so that there's time for the interpretation and they won't lose time because we do add the time in for interpretation. So if you could please remind speakers to just take a moment to pause so we can understand everything that's being said. Can you do that, please? Our interpreter?
Yes, I did. Do you want me to say it on this microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. You were saying that as I was speaking into the microphones. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Very good. Next speaker, good morning, please.
Hola, buenos dias. Good morning. Muy buenos dias. Mi nombre es Natalia Lozada. Soy la promotora de Clínica Monsignor Romero.
I'm a promoter of Clínica Romero.
Clínica Romero está el día de hoy para apoyar la iniciativa
Clínica Romero is here to support the initiative
De la alcaldesa
Of the Alcaldeza. Karen Bass.
Pues esto traerá alivio a las familias sin hogar.
And this will bring relief for those families that do not have a home.
Este proyecto debe ser acompañado
This project must be accompanied by
De otras acciones que beneficien a las comunidades.
Other actions that can benefit our communities.
Alrededor del Hotel Mayfair.
Around the Hotel Mayfair.
Clínica Romero está lista
Clínica Romero is ready
Para trabajar con la comunidad.
To work with the community.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
My name is Rachel Lewis. The item is number 11. I live in the district of Miss Parks.
Okay, you have one minute.
I'm here to talk about the Mayfair project. I am a home care provider and I have been a home care provider for many years for my daughter who is disabled. However, like my friend before me, we're talking about people who are sleeping in cars making minimum wage. We're talking about people who have no home. And my understanding about the Mayfair project is that they're going to implement people so that they can have mental health in the building, so that they can have services in the building. And I think this is a better thing than what was preceded when they first did it during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes, good morning. I'm Lauren Natalie from AIDS Healthcare Foundation, speaking on 11 and general public comment.
Okay, so item number 11 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. So you have one minute.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good morning. So I'm speaking on item number 11. I want to say that the high cost of interim housing is a barrier to LA's homeless housing initiatives. When the city spends millions of dollars on projects with a cost like $282,000 per unit, like the Mayfair Hotel has cost, less money is devoted to services that actually connect people and services that will get people housed in the future. Additionally, interim housing is not the solution to homelessness housing. If the city is going to be spending such prices on homelessness housing, it should be for permanent units. It should be for places where people can really rest their head. Permanent supportive housing will allow the money spent on homelessness housing to be stretched much farther with real results. In 2020, a study from UCSF found that 86% of participants randomized into permanent supportive housing were successfully housed. By contrast, only 1/3 of people not randomized into permanent housing found their way to housing. Please use the money for real housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Speaker. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning. My name is Robert Fields. I'm with the Healthy Housing Foundation on item 11 and general comment.
Okay, so item number 11 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. So you have one minute.
So I agree with the lady previous to me that interim housing is really not the solution. We're spending too much money per unit, per person, and we have successfully done repurposing of buildings in Los Angeles and we housing people with an average rent of $600 a month and this is permanent housing. We're finding many of our applicants are not really wanting to go through your interim program. So it's really, you're throwing the money in the wrong way. So we have a successful way of housing people for much less and we would like you to consider that.
Thank you. All right, as our next speaker is coming up, I'm going to call a few more names. Julia Nicolas, Alicia Vasquez, Mark Dyer, Dominique Eastman, Dina Cruz, and Sokoro Chakon, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mark Dyer. I'm with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. And I'm just here to oppose the purchase of the Mayfair Hotel for a total cost of $83 million, $282,000 a unit, and $56,000 a year to house per person. AHF has successfully has a model that we've done at $100,000 per AHF successfully has a model that we've done at $100,000 per door, and as my colleague said, we support people for $600 a month on the average. I think there's a much better solution for housing and permanent housing instead of interim housing, and I think that should be considered and looked at more deeply. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Dominique Eastman. Yes, and I want to speak to item number 11 as well. I'm Associate Director of AIDS Healthcare Foundation, of the Housing Department. Just piggybacking off what my colleagues say, $83 million for a building with 300 units is excessive, especially when we're trying to get people off the streets and into housing. We can do it within five to 10 business days, from homeless to housing, and it's tried and true. We're very quick, we're very efficient at it. We think, if there's 46,000 people that are unhoused at the moment, so $83 million for 300 units, that's pretty excessive. You would need 153 Mayfair Hotels totaling over $12 billion to get that population housed. So we would like to oppose the purchase of the property. I think the money could be allocated for a wide variety of housing opportunities as well as, you know, putting a dent in the homeless population.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call a few more names. Rolando Chavez, Mark Loranger, Hillary Storm, Charles Porter, Bill Perslukey, Rob Kwan, and Rowan Van Sliev, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Deena Cruz. I live in Council District 14, but I grew up in Pico Union Westlake as a Salvadorian immigrant, so I'm intimately familiar with the community. I am here in support of item number 11 because the city needs a lot more help for our unhoused neighbors, and this is just a small step in the right direction. We need more in every corner of the city. I urge you to support this project, but also, anyone that opposes this project, what they're saying is that they perpetuate racism, poverty, and the inhumane conditions there are in how its neighbors live. So just, I urge you to listen carefully about those narratives that are being shared today and to support this project because it's going to really help the communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Sokoro Chakon, item 11. I'm here in, I live in Council District 9 and work on Council District 14, both areas with a large amount of housing needs, and that's why I'm here today to support this project, which is a comprehensive plan to address homelessness in the city. I understand the concerns of proximity to schools and residents' concerns. However, we now have encampments near schools in our neighborhoods. I support this project as it is an opportunity for the unhoused to live a dignified life off the streets and receive services they need provided by the Weingart Center, including the site being secure 24/7 that will cover many of the concerns debated in the last three days. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, speaker. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes, Rolando Chavez, item 11.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you and good morning. I'm here on behalf of Ultimate Health Services, the largest federally qualified health center in Los Angeles and nationally. We proudly stand with Mayor Karen Bass and her efforts and commitment to seek solutions to Los Angeles' homelessness epidemic. Our unhoused deserve a compassionate approach to their quality of life. As a major healthcare provider in the region, we understand that in order to address health inequities among the population, inequities among its complex and high-need population, we must seek and find immediate pragmatic solutions to housing access along with other social drivers of health. We thank Mayor Karen Bass for her tireless leadership on this matter, and thank you all.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Mark Loranger, President and CEO of Chrisalys. On item number 11, I'm here to strongly support and encourage the purchase of the Mayfair Hotel. It's an important solution for the Inside Safe Program to be successful and provides a safe landing spot for our LA grand folks. At Chrisalys, we run employment social enterprises that provide job opportunities at projects like this, and in fact, we're providing 80 staff through Weingart, seven Weingart facilities for programs like this. They're doing janitorial meal delivery and other services, and these clients tell me about how important it is that they are helping the community, that they're giving back, and they're helping their neighbors because they are from those communities. They have been homeless themselves, and now they're part of that solution. So we all have to do our part, and I strongly encourage you to go through with this purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Charles Porter, I work with United Coalition East Prevention Program in Skid Row. I would like to speak on item 11. We are facing endemic conditions, including homelessness and overdoses grounded in systemic failure and racism. Community members in Skid Row have advocated for the city's acquisition of property to create community spaces and meet local need. This is a progressive step toward helping the most vulnerable and will provide critical wraparound services. Although not located in Skid Row, it will serve people from that neighborhood. We view social connection as the opposite of addiction, and this site has great potential for strengthening these connections. I also ask that Inside Safe Projects provide leadership roles for residents to inform service delivery, programming, and to help measure effectiveness. Lastly, naloxone should be accessible to tenants, and any security should be unarmed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Morning, Groot. I'd like to speak on item 13 and general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
I'm here to speak in support of the Controller's appointment of Jamie York to the Ethics Commission. Appreciate the Council President scheduling this item and the Controller for making a great pick. This isn't your average commission. You need somebody on here that speaks the language, actually understands the political context, and is actually committed to being independent and taking the role seriously. For way too long, we've had some potted plants on this commission. There have been some really great commissioners along the years. I remember in 2018, when I first started looking at matching funds reform, the first thing I did was read all four reports on the matching funds program and listened to all four of the meetings, and it became startlingly clear that a bunch of these people on this commission had no idea what was going on. And it's not for, you know, to be too harsh, just looking at the issues at hand, you're dealing with things like the MAX match, qualifying contributions, aggregate threshold, how all of those three are interrelated. This was painful to explain to some of the council offices afterwards.
General public comment?
But we did have some commissioners that were really well-versed in things. Commissioner Levinson was able to shepherd them through a number of meetings, and then after she left, Commissioner Overstein was actually able to go through a marathon meeting and deliver this council something that was almost duh. You had a couple tweaks that you had to do, and that was it. Jamie's going to be able to dive into policy like that. She was into reform before it became cool, after we had a bunch of corruption scandals. She was deeply involved during the redistricting process, supporting independent redistricting and council expansion years ago, being involved last year during the conversations on Charter Ethics Reform, the municipal lobbying ordinance. I just know that she knows her stuff as well as anybody around this horseshoe, and I would say she knows it better than any of y'all but for the one council member who has served on the Ethics Commission, so I will show that bit of respect. Really hope you do support her vote, and we get some other good commissioners ahead of us in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Rowan Van Sliev with Hope the Mission, and speaking directly to the Mayfair Hotel.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Well, first off, I just want to thank the district, City Council, and the mayor, the councilwoman in that district for addressing homelessness there. We actually have a shelter in that district for families, and we are incredibly supportive of more shelter beds and more services for the people in that district. As the people in our family shelter walk out the front with their kids, as they themselves are addressing their homelessness, they're confronted by the homeless crisis, and we need more beds and more services in that district. And I want to say a special thank you to this City Council, this administration, the councilwoman in particular, because without the political support, without the political will and the funding, we are not going to address the homeless crisis, and we're incredibly thankful to be partnered with this project and with the city.
Thank you very much. As our next speaker is coming up, I'm going to call a few more names. Again, Julia Nicholas, Alicia Vasquez, Hillary Storm, Bill Perslukey, I'm sorry, Aurora Corona, Anget Gada, Janet Morris, Andrew Morris, and Eileen Cohen, please. Good morning.
Good morning, speaker. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Item number 11.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. My name is Renato Lira. I am the Director for the San Fernando Valley LGBTQ Center in the District 7. We're here today to support the mayor, Cavaz, for the hotel to be purchased. It's something really important for the LGBTQ students, the youth, and the trans community. It's something that we need a service in that community to make sure those specific, they're not on the streets. We have seen a lot of the trans community has been killed living on the streets, and especially in the District 7 and District 6. So this will be an opportunity to have a support for the LGBTQ at that hotel. That's why we're here, supporting our 100% to make sure that hotel gets get by so we can have support for the LGBTQ, not only for the San Fernando Valley, for the whole entire community. So that's why we're here 100% to support on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Janet Morris, and I'd like to speak on all available items for public comment as well as general.
So the items that are open for public comment are six and 13 through 15. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you.
Please begin with the items.
A project that is proposed and funded in a matter of few weeks with no notice to the community, no environmental impact report, and an actual failed proof of concept should not be built, especially at such a high cost of minimally $83 million. The Mayfair will be a no-barrier housing project that should not be in a stable, low-income neighborhood like Westlake that already supports more than their fair share of homeless housing. Like Project Room Key, the failed experiment, a low-barrier interim housing project will become a vertical Skid Row. Services you plan to have available don't have to be used by the residents there. Instead, the neighborhood deserves, what you've heard from the neighborhood of owners, renters, students, and small businesses are telling you that this project will cause a dangerous situation in their neighborhood. This neighborhood deserves stable housing for seniors, unhoused college students, and others, and not a Skid Row-type vertical apartment building or Mayfair, what you're planning for the Mayfair Hotel. The fact that it's being rushed through...
Speaker, that's going to be your general public comment because item number 11 is not open for public comment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would you like to speak to the items?
No, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Hello, Andrew Morris.
And which of the items would you like to speak on?
Can I do general public comment?
Okay, you have one minute.
I just don't see why everybody here is so surprised that they're destroying our city because you guys voted for these people. What do you expect's going to happen if you keep voting for corrupt people like this? They're going to keep destroying the city. Where's the mayor? Where is she? I don't see her anywhere. Did she not, did she not promise in her campaign to help us with the homeless crisis? So that's not really helping us. It's really not helping us at all when she wants to put 300 homeless people into a neighborhood. I don't know how much she's paying you guys. So why are you guys against, are you guys for the Mayfair project? Why would you be for the Mayfair project?
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, speaker. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
I will speak on the general.
Okay, you have one minute.
Okay, my name is Eileen Cohen. If the acquisition of the Mayfair goes through, it will have been done without hearing from the voice of the community at all. I learned of this project less than three weeks ago from the LA Times. There has been no community outreach from the mayor or Ms. Hernandez. This is a massive purchase, not a lease. Project Room Key caused over $11.5 million in damage in less than two years that the city has now paid for. Have the owners of the Mayfair, who will be getting about $20 million over market price, be putting that money back? It's in the Mayfair. The mayor's office only has a commitment with the Weingart Center for two years. So what will happen after that if the city does not have the money for another Weingart contract? The Seventh Street community will once again suffer. The purchase needs to be thought through.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes, good afternoon, oh, good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Aurora Corona, and I'm with the Pico Union Neighborhood Council. I also want to put into the record, we did file a community impact statement on item 11, the Mayfair purchase. However, we had technical difficulties last night with the portal, so I'm not sure if the council members have received it, so I just wanted to enter into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's several copies there. Our main concern is with our neighbors in Westlake, and we border the district, and I also frequent this area, and I firsthand noticed the failure with Project Room Key. Our Neighborhood Council opposes the Mayfair purchase without stricter amendments that have already been made. I want to thank our council member, Unicece Hernandez, for adding the amendments on yesterday's committee meeting, or I believe it was on Wednesday. So we want to thank her for starting and actually working with the community and adding the conditions that serve to protect the community and open the line of communication for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning, speaker. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Anget Gada, item number 11 and general public comment, please.
Okay, so item number 11 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general public comment. So you have one minute.
Okay, thank you. I'm a business owner, former resident, and father. My business next to the Mayfair was affected by Project Room Key. Those were the two most dangerous years I've ever experienced in the 25 years that I've been in Westlake. The Weingart Center has shown our community that they are not capable of managing this property. The purchase of the Mayfair will affect the livelihoods of members of our community that do not have the luxury to move. I'm asking the council to vote no on this purchase and allocate the $80 million to other options for permanent housing. Throughout this process, the community was never informed. If you vote yes, you must implement a 4118 for the area around the Mayfair. We must have a robust community advisory board and expect every promise in the amendment that was filed on Wednesday to be fulfilled. As currently worded, there is no security protection outside of the Mayfair and at the entrance. there is no security protection outside of the Mayfair and at the entrance. We need security at the Mayfair and for the properties located directly next to the Mayfair. Please vote no on this. It's not good for our community at all. Thank you.
Thank you. As our next speaker is coming forward, I'm going to call a few more names. Nami Oh, Jeremy Shore, Jean-Michel Ormond, Neri Larios, and Evelyn DaCosta, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Raul Claros, item 11 and public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment because item number 11 is not open for public comment.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council president and council members, for the space and time. I proudly serve as the chair of the Affordable Housing Commission for the city of LA. I also am the proud CEO and executive director of the El Salvador Corridor Association that represents over 126 street vendors, 80 brick-and-mortar business owners in the Pico Union area. Most of our members of our association live in Pico Union and in Westlake. We are here to support the Mayfair project and Mayor Karen Bass with the amendments, though, from Council District One and our council member, Unises Hernandez, who we want to thank for that local grassroots approach to making sure that we can find a solution together. We want to keep everybody safe, and we believe in insight safe. We believe in the project, but we also believe in making sure that inclusion at a local level is part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Could you please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
My name is Nami Oh, and I would like to speak about the Mayfair Hotel.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, thank you. I oppose to this purchase. I have been on that block my entire life. My family has owned business there, and now I own a business there. I was in the neighborhood when Project Room Key was in effect, and it was very scary. It was horrible, turned the block into a nightmare. Us business owners had to go around carrying weapons to protect ourselves. When we would call the cops, they won't come. They tell me that I should get a permit to get a firearm. I don't see how this is going to work. I'm also a conservator, who's someone who's mentally ill. I've been doing it for 28 years. I don't think purchasing a hotel and putting people in there is going to work. There needs to be an effective way, and I don't think putting everyone in a hotel on that block where it's all families and small businesses is the right idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Speaker. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Hi, I'm going to make a general comment. My name is Jean-Michel Ormond. I live across the street from where the Mayfair is. Six years ago, I was a homeless veteran. So even though I'm opposing this acquisition, I'm not a racist, and I'm not against homelessness. I'm a person of mixed race. I care about my community. I care about the 200, over 200 seniors that live in my building across the street from the Mayfair. We were impacted during Project Home Key when we could not use any of the bus stops around our neighborhood because people that were from the Mayfair house there were on our bus benches, drinking, smoking, they were selling, doing drugs, they were selling cigarettes, and harassing the women. And then we had school kids, two schools there, elementary schools that are in the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I'm going to call a few more names as the next speaker's coming forward. David Prentice, Josie Hudson, Evelyn DaCosta, and Elaine Alanis, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Shore. I'm making a general comment regarding the Mayfair. These funds would be better used for permanent supportive housing at this location, or affordable housing, or senior housing. In 2019, the number of LAPD calls at this location was 40. That's before Project Room Key. In 2020, Project Room Key started, and there were 166 LAPD calls made from this location. In 2021, during the peak of Project Room Key, there were 426 LAPD calls from this location. In 2022, we had 134 because it was winding down, and from this year, there's been nine. So clearly, there's a correlation between safety in the area, Project Room Key, interim housing, and the city is making promises that this will be different, but the community does not believe it. So let's just make this permanent housing, or just normal affordable housing, or just operate it as a hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Hi, good morning. Evelyn DaCosta for item 11.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
All right. So I'm here to urge the council once again to consider the realistic feasibility of this project financially, and as far as the services and security that can actually be effective in a 300-unit building, as well as to determine who's going to be holding the Weingart Group accountable for upholding the duties of their contract. And then I would also like to point out that any member of the council that's voting yes on that, on this matter, that has not actually been to the location of the Mayfair and seen the surrounding community, is basically making a decision without even knowing what it looks, what it looks like, how massive the structure is, what the surrounding community that would be affected, what actually looks like. So I just want to keep that in mind, that if you have not been there, it's kind of unethical to vote yes if you don't actually know what is going on and what it looks like. Yeah, consider the community, please. This money could be better spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us-
Good morning. My name is Neri Larios, and I'm talking about item 11.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay, the people that's voting yes on here do not live on Pico, on Westlake. And I don't approve this because the mayor didn't do outreach to the community, and didn't let us know about this, about this project. And I would like to, the mayor, to approve what Unises Hernandez said about on Monday, the seventh item. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Yes, David Prentice, under item 11.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. So my name is David Prentice. I am the current CEO of The Midnight Mission in downtown Los Angeles. We are on the corner of Sixth and San Pedro, right in the middle of our crisis. And I'm here to advocate for the Mayflower, Mayfair project. I want to bring the human issue into this. When I look out of my office window down onto Skid Row, what I'm seeing are people that I can't help because all my shelter beds are full, and there's nowhere to progress the next step. I understand the arguments, permanent versus interim. I get all that. But the bottom line is, The Midnight Mission and myself as a person, The Midnight Mission is an organization, we're going to advocate for anything to be built to get the unhoused off of the street and into a safe and clean environment. It's human life we're talking about here, and I would hope you would take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rabbi Josie Hudson. I am the lead on clergy and formation at LA Voice and a resident of CD4. I am here to speak today in strong support of the hotel project. We believe that housing is a human right. We believe that home is sacred. We believe that every human being deserves to live with a roof over their head. We believe the city can help us to achieve this, and indeed has a moral responsibility to do so. We speak today, and I speak today, in full support of this project.
Thank you. As our next speaker's coming forward, I'm going to call a few more names. Johnny G., Kay Hartman, Jonathan Ross, Julian Nicholas, and Elaine Alanis, please.
Did I skip, my name is Elaine Alanis. Do I skip?
Oh, perfect.
Can I ask the city attorney a quick question before, I'm not going to talk. I just want to ask him, on Wednesday, there were amendments that were made, and the public was not allowed to comment on those. Is there any way to get additional time for that? The city attorney that was here did say that it was-
I can't respond to that, but you have. So which of the items would you like to speak on today?
Today, Mayfair purchase, please.
So you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Elaine Alanis. I'm the president for the Westlake North Neighborhood Council. I've been here through the duration of this process, and I've heard the Weingart speak. And I don't know any bank on the planet that would give a personal business loan to a business that doesn't have a plan. They don't have a plan. The majority of the people that are going to move in are not going to serve Westlake, nor the tents that are currently there. I hear racism, racism is racism, but the people that are saying that don't live here and obviously don't know the color of the skin of those that reside. I don't think that, many of you have heard the unethical practices, that there will not be funding in the future for the services here. How can you hear what they're saying, unethical things, and still vote on items like this? It does, it blows my mind that it will be all for Skid Row, nothing for Westlake North. There were amendments made, but that had nothing to do to help our community. There was nothing to reduce the debt of the discretion that was currently made. The city should not, or the taxpayers should not incumbent, have to pay the five, 11.5, that should be reduced from what is currently being proposed for the project. There is nothing for public safety. Our public safety has no idea this is about to happen. So it is very unethical what's going on. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Johnny G., general comment.
Okay, you have one minute.
Good morning, council members. The summer of 2023 is coming to a close. The doors of the public and private schools are reopening, and this is a time to educate kids and adults in an ethical way so we can build a better world for all. Let's see if the teachers can prepare the young to live accordingly as law-abiding citizens. Let's not forget the sacrifice of the parents who worry for the welfare and future of their children. They spent countless hours trying to bring love and comfort in a cold, calculating world. Family members, neighbors, and friends need to love. And can't we, isn't love is what it's all about?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
My name is Jonathan Ross. I'm the president of Stop Midvale Pico, Inc., and I'm speaking to make general comments, not against any one group, but to speak against all of the city's wasteful, disastrous, and counterproductive homeless housing policies and initiatives, including the Mayfair Hotel and Midvale Pico, policies that harm small businesses and destroy neighborhoods. And I'm here to stand shoulder to shoulder with all of the neighborhoods that have already fallen victim or will soon fall victim to these policies, and most importantly, to speak against and oppose the absolutely un-American way in which these policies are being put into motion. The voters of this city are enraged and outraged at the poorly thought-out and self-defeating way that the city is promulgating its homeless policies, and our eyes are on each and every council member in this regard. We are strong, we are determined, we are united, and we will not back down. Our organization will utilize every legal means available to oppose any council member who supports these disastrous projects.
Your time has expired.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Hi, yes, my name is Kay Hartman, and I'm speaking on item 13.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item.
Thank you. Yes, I am the president of the Palms Neighborhood Council. I am speaking for myself. I can't think of a better choice for the Ethics Commission than Jamie York. Ms. York is as passionate about ethics as anybody I know. She has raised the consciousness of neighborhood council members where ethics are concerned. She's single-handedly convinced about 40 neighborhood councils to write CISs in support of Council File 22-0560 about the MLO updates. When was the last time you saw 40 NCDs weigh in on a council file? It doesn't happen, but Ms. York made it happen, all for the betterment of the city and not for herself. When I get stuck trying to chase down potential ethics violations, Ms. York points me to the best place to continue my investigation. I look to her for this kind of advice because she has the knowledge to provide it. Knowledge, passion, drive. She is what we need. Please confirm her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. As our next speaker is coming up, I'm going to call out a few more names. Candido, Mike Greenspan, Anthony Garcia, Dr. Critical Truth Bay, and Glenn Foundation Sarah, please. Come on up, Candido. Thank you.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Yes, I'd like to speak on 13, 13, 14, 15, and public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Let me just introduce myself. Candido Chicano Cowboy, modest, and File 20-1575, which has to do with the rodeo, please. Let's bury that. Item 13, if I may, that is the appointment of Jamie York. There is no one, no one that I've met or seen in the past 10 years who equals her integrity. This woman is unbelievable, and I hope that you folks can put up with her because she's going to challenge you. And so I hope that you guys are unanimous in her approval. Item 14, that has to do with reinstating and a reward for murr. You know, some people back here who are my friends will say I'm a snitch, but you know what? I will snitch if I can bring peace to a family who has lost a member. I had to do it myself. It was hard, but you have to stand by the law. If we have no law, we have no order. So again, my friends back there, if you think I'm a snitch, or anybody's a snitch because they do the right thing with rewards, I'm sorry we differ on that. Item 15, the abatement, the weed abatement. I'm still on 15, correct, sir? Don't take away my public time. All right. 15 is the weed abatement. Here again, you got, folks are talking about an adjustment. You know what? Reseda Boulevard, let's use that weed abatement to get rid of some of the stuff that you guys have created, or let's say the previous council, in regards to what's going on there with the trash, et cetera, the crime, et cetera. So if you can adjust weed abatement and brush abatement, you can also change other things, like the parking situation that you guys have destroyed on Reseda Boulevard. May I go on to public comment?
Yes, public comment, general public comment.
Wonderful day today. We had Black Business Day today, right? And as I stood here and I watched these wonderful people here who have worked hard for their businesses, I asked myself, do they have to worry about 20 people coming into the stores and robbing them? Do they have to worry about their customers being dragged by the purse because somebody wants their purse? I don't think so. You know, I was at the Gladys Knight Performance Wednesday at the Hollywood Bowl, and I looked around, and we're 60, 70, 80-year-old people, and we look, and I looked, and I said, my God, we are the ones that went through the racism and all the nonsense of the 50s, 60s, and even in the 70s, and it continues today. And I said, why can't we just do this? Why can't we just love each other and care about each other? And I thought, these are the people who have suffered. And yet, when I see Canoga Park and the mall there being taken over by 20 people, if they were Latinos or Chicanos, well, they would have said, 20 Mexicans, Latinos just went through Canoga Park, but they didn't. Everybody could identify who it was, but nobody will. Because if you don't stand for law and order, you stand-
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, I'm going to call a few more speakers. All right, I'm going to call a few more speakers. Thank you, Candido, your time's expired. Thank you. I'm going to call Daniel Gus, Monica Bellucci, Stacy Cigar Bolinger, and Dana Cohen, please.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
All available items and public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. The items that are open for public comment are six, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Okay, first and foremost, let's start with fourteen. The founding for monetary value for the unsolved mystery of Tiani Theus. Back in January twenty-twenty-one, sixteen-year-old Tiani was murdered, shot in the neck, and throw off the overpass on Manchester Figueroa. Barely did we have city council there. At that moment, her father saw her the day before where she said she was going to a party. So we have a high rate of sex trafficking alongside Figueroa. As we know, District Eight, District Nine. It's a normal thing to see young ladies paraded in scandalous clothing year in and year out. And all they do, Seventy-Seven Division, is give them a ticket. No offerings of help or alternatives, because again, they're black girls. But what's even more alarming is that last year, you had an award of a hundred and fifteen million dollars, excuse me, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Sixty-five thousand from L.A. City, I believe ten thousand from L.A. County, and fifty thousand from California Highway Patrol. Now you reduce it to fifty thousand dollars for her murder. Sixty-five thousand dollars you removed from a sixteen-year-old girl whose family he didn't have much, because you guys are playing politics and gatekeeper. You're talking shit about the people who want to make a change because we're not part of the club. So when you reduce the award for a murder of a sixteen-year-old black girl, but you keep saying that black women are highest rate of this, or black girls or black boys are higher rate of that in your data plan, but you don't show it with the funding that you waste year in and year out. It's hypocritical. So remove this reward altogether. This family doesn't need your crumbs. They need you to be right with God. They need you to be honest and fair. They need you to stop misappropriating our taxes year in and year out. This is particularly to the fraternities and sororities and the boule and all these people that want to keep having black face, but don't do nothing for the black community. So please do not insult the Theus family with a fifty thousand dollar reward that was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars last year. We all know the homeless crisis. You had the wine guard that was at Project Roomkey, and they allowed drugs going on everywhere. They had the security guards stealing, robbing, raping some of the clients in there. Now you want to have the same wine guard center to do permanent housing there at the Mayfair? Give me a break already. This is absolutely egregious how we continue-
General public comment.
-to utilize our taxes for your own piggy bank. So Karen Bass, Community Coalition in South L.A. Got a lot of funding. So I'm asking for the next elections that you politicians don't have nonprofits of your own. It's a conflict of interest. You fund yourselves, and then you fund the crumbs to your constituents, and it's not fair. It's not fair at all. So I affirm that I will support and defend the most vulnerable constituents and wield off against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I will bear faith and allegiance to the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. As a descendant of slaves, I will take the obligation to help all people first and foremost. And I will discharge these duties November third, twenty-twenty-six. So you got two and a half years to get your shit together. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Item thirteen is a commission appointment. It's rare that I actually am excited to see a name on these commission appointments. They're typically nepotism and networking picks for y'all. But Kenneth Mejia did a good thing by nominating Jamie York to the Ethics Commission. She has displayed just a very passionate commitment to something that this council is terrible at, which is ethics, integrity, honesty, abiding by rules, knowing what the rules are. And like other speakers have mentioned, she's exceptionally helpful when you reach out to her. If you need help with anything, understanding as far as how the city works, she's great, and she's been wonderful in her service on the Reseda Neighborhood Council. So I hope despite my endorsement, all of you will vote yes on her appointment. Number fourteen is a reward for snitches. My biggest concern with these is just that the LAPD is already the best-funded organization we have in the city. Their budget exceeds most of the other city budgets combined. I don't know why. If they feel like they need help to do their jobs from ordinary citizens, they can't cover that themselves out of their own budget. It just doesn't really seem to make sense to take it out of the city's budget when the city is continuously just funneling money to the LAPD as it is. So if they want to pay a snitch to help them, they should have to do it themselves. Fifteen is regarding modernizing and updating the annual weed and brush abatement process. This is definitely something that's important as far as making sure the weeds and brush aren't creating a fire hazard or an accessibility hazard. I'm just a little bit confused at what modernizing means. To the best of my knowledge, one of the most efficient forms of weed abatement is using goats to eat the weeds and the brush. And that's not really a modern solution whatsoever. Maybe we should be looking into existing systems that are known to work well. Oftentimes, when we're looking at modernizing things, we're looking at lining the pockets of our donors with new contracts and equipment and things. And I don't know why this particular issue requires modernization when weed abatement is like a pretty old system. Like I said, goats, goats have, are like pretty undefeated as far as being effective, environmentally sound. And you know, you're killing two birds with one stone. You're feeding the goats and you're getting rid of the brush. So why don't we just stick with that? Goats, goats on item fifteen. Thank you, I'll move on to general now. It has been heartbreaking to watch the reputation of our city government suffer continued disgrace because of Kevin's racist rhetoric. His continued presence here is sick. It's causing severe and ongoing harm. We want a resignation, Kevin Daley's resignation. We need a resignation, a resignation from Kevin. Don't you think it's time Kevin resigned? 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 Time to resign. We need a resignation from Kevin.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on?
I heard earlier that there was one before item fourteen or whatever. Could you just tell me the items that are available, please?
The items that are open for public comment are six and thirteen through fifteen.
Six, thirteen through fifteen? All right, so all available items and a general public comment, please.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general-
Can you stop my time over, please?
Please begin with the items first.
Sweet, thank you. Item number six is to establish a citywide skate park advisory group to look at San Pedro Skate Park Associations, successful collaboration relating to building wood or whatever. It's already successful. I don't know why we need to throw money at a report. There's no fiscal impact statement. There's no listing of how much this is going to cost. We already know the skateboard works. If you see kids skating, and they only fall when they want to, and when they don't want to, they don't eat it that bad. Skateboard is doing pretty well, skate park. So we don't think we need a report on that. And if we do, show us how much it's going to cost. I believe item fourteen, right? Item fourteen, I think it's really funny that we have a motion from Councilman Price. I don't have anything against him personally. I don't think what he did as far as taking money to help somebody with medical bills was as bad as some of y'all taking money to line the pockets of people that are living fine already. If we had a universal healthcare, he wouldn't need to embezzle money to get his second wife's feet fixed, whatever, whatever it was. A man is supposed to take care of his family anyway. If he got two families, he got to take care of them. So current price, that part, not that bad, to be honest. I'm a reasonable guy. But Harris Dawson, him having a motion is a lot more egregious to me. Because even though he doesn't have any federal charges, he gave away public land to the Marriott in the middle of a housing crisis. So while current price might have some federal charges, I don't hold him against for taking care of his second family, because that's what a man is supposed to do. But, you know, some people walking around putting motions forward, no federal charges, explicitly being corrupt with their back to the public, giving away public land to the Marriott Hotel, trying to act like he's so pro solving the murder of a person. Anybody could throw their name on a motion and be like, oh, yeah, I hope they find the guy that killed her. What the hell? I don't see him out there. Item fifteen, weed abatement. I mean, you know, there's some parts that need weed cutting. I don't think that process needs to be modernized. I think using the motorized, like, tools is pretty modern already. There's no, there's nothing here about what that's going to cost. So that's pretty silly. We need to know, when you have people dying on the street and falling asleep in the weeds, you should know how much it's going to cost to update the process to cut the weeds. You could just send a motherfucker down there to cut that shit, but instead you got to put together a report to be like, how can we solar power to cut the weeds? Like, fuck off, go get a pair of shears and go cut them yourself. Twenty seconds. I think item thirteen might have been available. That's Jamie York. I've met her. She has a lot of integrity, so it seems, you know? She's very nice, and she's very aware of the corruption going on in the city. So at the very least, she's going to take care of it in some regard. One minute for general public comment.
General public comment?
So, so you guys only care about business owners? If they, if the city council cared about black and brown people, then why won't they freeze the rents on their homes and businesses? Why won't they reverse the redistricting process? Where we all heard, I look around and I look at my neighborhood, and I see all these little brown people, and I don't recognize it anymore, or whatever the fuck Neary said about the Wyockins. So if we care so much about brown people, why don't we not reverse that redistricting process and get the lines back how they were before that happened? If we care so much about black people, why don't we bring back the South Central Farm and green spaces and all that nonsense about food and the community? And if they care so much about the people and the public, then why the fuck won't they listen? And why do they sit there eating while the rest of us starve out here? And if they care so much about Jews, then why do they support the nation of Israel while they're water cannoning and putting horse cavalry over Jewish people, protesting their judicial quote-unquote reforms? You care so much about antisemitism, yet you made a motion that made criticizing the nation of Israel antisemitic and a hate crime. Meanwhile, they're water cannoning Jews off of-
Speaker, your time has expired. I'm going to call a few more names. Maura Chen, Mike York, Michelle Gallagher, Renato Ira, and Julia Nicholas, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Good afternoon. My name is Dana Cohen, and in the interest of transparency, I have personalized to Councilmember Park, Ramon Rodriguez, Yaroslavsky Blumenfeld, and yourself, President Krikorin. And I'm on, I'm speaking on items one and thirteen.
So item number one is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. So you have one minute for item thirteen and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you, sir. Due to my, I'm here to support Jamie York to the City Ethics Commission. I previously worked with her on a state senate campaign. And the objectivity and respect she had both for voters and elected officials and other stakeholders was stupendous. She was kind, methodical, not only confident, but patient. This is a woman that knows how to work within the system and with those that are uncomfortable with the system. The public's involvement in local politics, not only in Los Angeles, but nationwide, is at its lowest in a long time, if not ever. That's because politicians and city employees alike are not being held accountable to ethics, administrative, and criminal violations. Mrs. York is all about transparency and holding parties accountable. So sometimes too much so, if I might say so. With that said, despite being, with that, despite not being an attorney, her objectivity in analyzing complicated issues with numerous viewpoints is superb and will benefit the city. Thank you for your time, and I point to my written comment on file with the city clerk.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Maura Chen, item eleven.
Okay, so item eleven is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. So you have one minute.
Good morning. My name is Maura Chen, and I'm an architectural designer with L.A. Voice. I work on affordable housing on sites across L.A. County, and I'm a resident of CD One. L.A. Voice is a multiracial, multi-faith organization that develops community leadership to advocate for the most pressing needs and improve life for all Angelenos. Housing remains a primary concern among a diversity of residents. We support the project because incorporating ownership of permanent interim supportive housing is crucial to move towards ending homelessness, lowering the per-night cost of a bed relative to the current leasing model. The wraparound supportive services proposed for this project aim to ensure the well-being of surrounding residents because everyone benefits when individuals are safely housed. I want to specifically thank Unicece for the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, followed by Spindler and Herman. And that's, I think I've called all of the names now who are here. Go right ahead.
Good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Hello, my name is Michelle Gallagher, and I would like to speak on number, items number thirteen and general public comment. And first, I have a CIS from the Reseda Neighborhood Council on item number thirteen to read to you. Please tell me when I may commence.
Please begin with the items. One minute for the item and one minute for general public comment.
Okay, so I can get this all in. So the Reseda Neighborhood Council passed the following CIS regarding item number thirteen, and I wrote the draft on this. And if everyone could just please keep it a little bit down. Whereas in the course of our service on the Reseda Neighborhood Council, Jamie York has vigorously advocated for respectful treatment of all stakeholders. Whereas Jamie York has provided unparalleled leadership in the effort to make sure lobbyist requirements apply to neighborhood councils, ensuring a transparent environment within which neighborhood council representatives all over the city will be able to serve. Whereas she has worked tirelessly for the RNC. Whereas we are certain that Jamie York will provide the same tireless work ethic to all her endeavors. Lamenting that the Reseda Neighborhood Council will no longer directly benefit from her shining example, recognizing nonetheless that the entire city of Los Angeles will benefit from her commitment, the RNC recommends the appointment of Jamie York-
General public comment?
And general public comment to the City Ethics Commission forthwith. So now, thank you, everyone, for not talking. I really appreciate that. Jamie, in my experience, I've been working with her for several years. She's competent, but not only that, she's relentless. She's frustratingly fair. She's a detective with an eagle eye for abnormalities. And she works so hard. Sometimes I've estimated the equivalent of forty to eighty hours a week for the RNC, the NC system in general, and for the city of Los Angeles, for no compensation whatsoever. She's a force of nature, a heroine. And I'm just so grateful to be here for her to hopefully be appointed to the Ethics Commission. Everyone's going to benefit. Thank you.
Good morning. Which of the items would you like to speak on? Which of the items would you like to speak on?
Well, thank you and good to see the houseboy again. All items and general public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
And I'm here to support weed abatement for goats. Let's give it a hand. Yeah. That's right. Get me up here, human. I'm trying. Yes. So what I do is, is I eat the vegetation and then I go off and I shit the vegetation out. This saves on feed. This is something that apparently Unicece knows something about. And when you eat less and you eat healthier, as I do, you look as good as I do. You wouldn't know it, I'm forty years old. I don't even look a day over three. Because I will eat your vegetation, shit it out, and I will do it only for the cost of a trailer and Mr. Spindler's need. He needs a small tractor. Yes, we've been working with Kevin on this. A, a small tractor that will fit on a sidewalk. And why are we doing that, sir? Oh, so I can drive it down the sidewalks and push all the homeless into the street? That's right, yes, that's another plan we have. And then of course, we have snitches. Do definitely get stitches. Yes, that's right. A small, little, fine. Try making it five hundred thousand dollars there and see how many snitches you get. Well, they'll be lining up here at eight o'clock in the morning to get that money. Num, 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 five hundred thousand. Fifty thousand dollars isn't worth it. Because now, it costs a lot of money, Kevin, to buy a fake ID and a passport to leave the country now. That costs at least how much there, sir? Well, about a hundred and twenty-five. Right, so, you know, you have to have moving money. Yes. And then we get to today's most disturbing news. Yes, Bob Blobbleld, you have one of your constituents here today. A person with a net worth under ten million dollars is attempting to get on the Ethics Commission. Yes, I know. I know, Ms. Park, I know how upset you are. Yes, Kevin, I know you can't believe it. And a pet McCosker were here today, he would vomit his food right now at the thought of this. Imagine somebody who is a real constituent, an actual renter, an actual person that lives in a poor, bespectacled neighborhood. A shithole called Reseda is about to become one of the most powerful commissioners. Now Marquisie, are you gonna let that happen? Or are you gonna put one of your surrogates in there by continuing this item? As I heard rumors this morning. Let's ask, let me get to the cellphone here. Okay, hold on. Yes, here, we have a message. It says, um, "Do anything to block the appointment." Oh, I wonder who sent that? But goat puppet is here and now Jamie will get appointed. Yes, and we go in and Mr. Price, you're invited. Sunday night, we're gonna have a candle vigil for the great one, CD10, Marquisie's natural born father, the great Mark Ridley Thomas. Let's give him a hand. All right. As he makes his passage into the next world of federal prison. So let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, let this sixty-eight-year-old tyrant have a, his own jail cell. Let this person have an ability to take a shower without other men in it and a chef. Let him not rat out the great Janice Hahn, my mother. Let him not rat out the great Yaroslavsky so that our current Yaroslavsky doesn't have to spend time with her father-in-law in prison. Let him shut his mouth and let him go into court and face that trial and appeal it. God bless you, MRT. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Speaker. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items you would like to speak on?
Jennifer Goody, items thirteen and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
All right, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. It would be unfathomable to not confirm Jamie York's appointment to the Ethics Commission, but I felt, still felt strongly enough about it to take the time out of my day to come down here and speak in favor of it. Even though it should be a foregone conclusion, LA would be hard-pressed to find a better candidate for the commission than Ms. York. Her tireless dedication to ethics and unparalleled work ethic have been demonstrated time and time again, as well as her drive to make changes to make ethics and city government more accessible and transparent to Angelenos. She not only advocated for sensible MO changes to increase transparency, but spent countless hours educating those in the NC system and getting them involved. She's straightforward and always acts in good faith. Honestly, this appointment is a brush, a breath of fresh air and does much to restore the faith in Los Angeles city government, being that she is not a connected political appointee, but a regular person with unparalleled knowledge and passion for the topic at hand. I look forward to the good work she will do on behalf of Angelenos on the Ethics Commission. The NC system's loss is the city's gain. We need more commission appointments like Ms. York and to move away from the system where those making the decisions are selected based on favors owed.
General public comment?
I came down today to speak because last week I called in to support Karen Waters and Baby Fable didn't take the call and comments, even though he said there were very few. I sat with my hand up for two hours listening to presentations and did not get called on. Today, I was skipped as well and had to show a picture of my speaker card to get up here to get my two minutes. Council needs to do better when it comes to allowing accessible public input to city government. I would also like to thank Councilmember Hutt for the fun community events that she's been putting on in our neighborhoods. I know it means a lot to our community, especially the children. It may seem frivolous, but it makes a big difference to the kids attending and they're often heard saying things like, "This never happens here." Please keep up the good work in letting our children know that they matter and can have good things. Thank you, Councilmember Hutt.
Which of the items would you like to speak to?
You start the time, please.
All, all items and non-agenda public comment, which entitles me to four fucking minutes.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
So item thirteen for the record. Jamie York of Yorktown Ethics Commission. Can you do the job? The job that we delegated as the public? We, the fucking people of California, have a right to protest and contest whether or not Jamie's crying. She saw the look in my eyes. She knew he'd forget her and so they say goodnight. Oh, 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 Jamie. Jamie's crying. She knows what the gadfly will do for love. Now item fourteen asshole, that was Van Halen. Now in fourteen, Harris Dawson, Sam Bo's Uncle Tom. Reaffirm action that Price, Price, are you listening? Price, the unsolved murder of T.O.N.E. Thias. Additional six months. Where's the fucking money so a snitch can get stitches? That's the problem with California. You allow people to die because you take away my Second Amendment to protect the fucking Americans of California, nigger. NWA, make others understand. Fool attorney, MOU for the record, fool. And then I go to fifteen, nigger. Motion of Ramon Noodle, who's not here, and that of Ms. Rodriguez, where's Rodriguez? Word of the fat, moo.
General public comment?
Yeah. It has to do to restore modernizing weed and brush. The weed that you passed on measure sixty-four allowed cannabis to get a permit by that fucking Herb Wesson, Alexis Wesson. Tell those bitches, snitches get stitches. Leave your fucking permits up your ass because the American people don't wanna get high. We just wanna smoke one for YouTube. That's a big one for you, bro. Get it? Now, again, the sympathy of brush abatement and process is goats and Kevin Delion to push this stuff to the side because that's what weed abatement is about. Vote for Kevin Delion because he got balls. Now my general public comment. All I wanna do for Kevin.
Speaker, I believe the chair has already moved you to general public comment, so your time has expired.
That, that's, that's your time. Your time is up. Please leave the podium. If you continue to disrupt, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. We're going to virtual.
Mr. Herman, please leave the podium or else you're going to be... Mr. Herman, you, you need to be quiet. We're moving on to the telephones. This is your final formal warning.
All right, we'll go to virtual.
First caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, and general public comment.
Hi, I, I believe you said thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen and general public comment. Um, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Um, if you could speak up just a little bit, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Uh, yes, um, again, Ms. York, uh, welcome. I hope they do, uh, go ahead and appoint you. We need somebody there. Apparently there's not enough people monitoring city council because of all the indictments and people going to jail and how many times we have to change chairs. So I hope you go by that standard and ethics. So I hope you do get appointed. Um, let's move forward to fourteen. The fourteen, yeah, it should be something out there to turn in these people that are doing the looting. And if there's financial monies there, let's do it. It just shouldn't be for murders. It should be across the board. Get these people to talk. If it's gonna be financial, as long as it's a truth and you can prove it, give it to them. You want them to stop, same way you stopped the carjackings in the eighties? Give them real crime time for the real crimes they're doing. Whether they're the getaway drivers. And then we go back to the same thing yesterday's city council meeting where the mayor's there, or not meeting, but the city mayor without LAPD saying that they're gonna be not lenient on these people and that you go ahead and get a person that's supposed to be doing six months in prison for peeping tom back on the street in two days. And then you rearrest them. You can't do that. You're dropping the message. You're gonna prosecute them, prosecute them. Let them know, jailhouse politics, they're gonna talk to each other, they're gonna stop. That easy. Robert, uh, Luna, come on, man. I wish you would have thought the same way when you spoke about those Latina ladies. Oh my gosh, I can just imagine if that was my mom or my grandmother. How about the lady that was accosted in Lancaster? And your officer, not once did you say that that officer was gonna go to jail. We might have to discipline them. I can't believe what I saw. Talk to the people the way they want to receive you, like you really mean it from the heart. If it's affecting you, it's affecting them. Fifteen, going to the abatement. I hope that that is not for one company, one friend that, uh, is going forward. I hope it goes across the board and people can put bids in to do so because there's plenty of goat owners out there that whip trailers and do that kinda work. I hope it isn't just for one person. Not nepotism, not friends, or somebody that's being empowered to put that on that board. Yeah, let the goats do the work. But let it be an open process where more than one company gets that work. That would work. Public comment. Yeah, and the May, uh, Mayfair Hotel. Ninety-one twenty in District Six, ninety-one twenty Woodman. It's three times over budget, still belongs to the city of LA because it's on a lease, still not open, two, uh, one and a half times past the year, calendar year. So when you look at having a retrofit, a building, windows, abatement, the ca, uh, the cast, uh, sewer lines that they had to change out and it's still not open? Do you really wanna get involved buying or keeping the hotel? Selling it to them, to Maygard, may be a better solution. At least they'll have to absorb those costs. But I hope you hold them to the same standards that you're doing here on the public sign. Make sure that everything's habitable, new, weatherized, and it's gonna be there for a long time for the people that are gonna spend the money. I'm just giving you an example. Three times over budget? You're looking at one point six billion dollars after it's all said and done.
General public comment? Next speaker?
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi, uh, speaking on agenda item one and general public comment.
Okay, so item number one is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general. So we have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you. Max Sherman, speaking on behalf of the Department Association in Greater Los Angeles. To require mold and lead inspections will seriously delay renters being able to move into their units and displace renters that have already moved into their unit with, when such inspections are conducted. Mold exists in all environments, in, in the air, both inside and outside of units. It lives wherever water exists, including showers, toilets, and sinks. Mold is not a serious health hazard in all but the smallest number of instances, usually due to unique individual sensitivities. LA County Public Health Department states that testing for mold is not generally recommended as the mold necessary to cause health problems varies greatly from person to person. There are currently no available standards for determining what an acceptable quantity of mold is. Lead paint only creates an issue if and when the paint is not maintained. Uh, the EPA states that lead-based paint is still present in millions of homes, normally under layers of indoor paint, where it remains without any problem. We ask that the report back reflect a specific technology that is proposed to be used for mold and lead paint, as well as the time parameters needed for such testing. We also ask that the report back includes information as to inspectors' current workload, additional time that will be added to conduct such testing.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Item thirteen and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for item thirteen and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the item.
Good afternoon, City Council. Thank you, Council President, for agendaizing this item. Lionel Morris, Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. Speaking as an individual, I'm here to support Jamie Lauren York from the Reseda Neighborhood Council to the City Ethics Commission. Ms. York has been a strong opponent of the neighborhood council system. She's very knowledgeable in ethics and city charter reform. I have witnessed her in person and what she's capable of. And she has the support of the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. I alone have been rallying the neighborhood councils, help, um, encouraging other board members in the Northeast Valley to support her because I believe in her. Ms. York is committed to city ethics and she's a great addition to the City Ethics Commission. And I urge my colleagues in the city council, please vote yes for Jamie Lauren York. And I wanna thank Jennifer Goody, Mr. Rob Quan, Andre Galley, Michelle Gallagher, Candido Maris, and everyone else.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Thank you. It's Eric Corvina. I'd like to speak on the available items and the general public comment.
So the items that are open for public comment are six, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, I will. I know Jamie York and I think she's done a, a good job as a member of the public advocating for transparency, especially around, uh, sneaky lobbyists, um, who are not identifying themselves as lobbyists in front of bodies, but giving trippy little comments that are really persuasive and sound interesting. It reminds me actually, and maybe she, Jamie York, who's being proposed by Kenneth Mejia for the Ethics Commission, to look into this activity where you have a series of callers saying that they're from a CD4, I'm a CD4 resident, but they don't say where they live. And then they advocate strongly for a project that everybody who lives near the project hates. And they don't even give their name, but they sound really persuasive. And then there's a company called Marathon, which is a communication... And then there's a company called Marathon, which is a communications company. It gets paid like tens of thousands of dollars, but it doesn't hit the books for what? Until six months later or more because of the disclosure timing. So here we know that they bought Harvard Westlake, bought a bunch of people to call in to help out, to push an agenda that's anti-community. And they're doing it in a really kind of sleazy way, so it's right up her alley. But I don't know, you know, what can one person do? Um, she's a fighter from the public, but remember she's coming from Mejia's office, which is home to Sergio Perez, who is one of the most arch sinister comedic villains at the Ethics Commission in Ethics Commission history. Ethics Commission history, by the way, is a great subject. Paul Kukorian, a million years ago, that's what he likes to say, as he smiles in front of Heather and David, uh, was actually a commissioner, which is highly impressive. He even got Rob Quan to tip his hat to the man today. So that's, Paul Kukorian is doing a great job of holding the line, one of the great con men of all time. I admire his work and I admire your work too, Mr. Sosin. Regarding modernizing weed abatement, here's a little reveal. It's not about getting weed whackers or solar trimmers. You're not going to like this, folks in the public. Modernizing means, you know, we're going to have to start charging people a routine fee, not just charging an inspection fee to the people who, uh, who are out of compliance. That's what they're doing over at County of Los Angeles where Lindsay Horvath is a leader in nickel and diming. And they're coming after him for fifty bucks year one, one hundred bucks year two, and in the third year, everybody with a parcel is going to get a hundred and fifty who lives in the unincorporated area of the county. So that's what modernizing means. Um, which is really too bad because that's not fair. In Africa, we pay a lot and it should be covered and, you know, we should be safe, nobody wants to minimize the safety. Africa Business Day was sweet and I see that you're doing a, you know, reward. Uh, and whenever I see these rewards, I go, oh, that's interesting, why in the world are we doing these rewards and cycle and all over the place? And then you look where it's going and it's Africa Business Day. It's Danny Bakewell's company, uh, Companies, our weekly Los Angeles Sentinel is. Yeah, I'll go to the general in a second, Los Angeles Sentinel and all that. So these are little payments that are not so little, ev- on a kind of a structural basis because the idea is that we get the information to a community where you might get a, a taker. It's a puppet set a few weeks ago, if you offered more money, they'd be lining up at the door. Here's the final point. Um, the City Council and the County of Los Angeles are, are together maneuvering for a private school and it's not okay. We need to see the contract between the County Flood Control District and Nicole Davis Tinkum should know about this. And Jonathan Groth, you're the big boy attorney for the city, or if we'd get David Michaelson involved since he's in the email chain. We need to see the documentation because we're not giving away public land to a private imperious academy, Mr. Kukorian. We know you got twenty-four donations from them, max, and you've been working diligently from another district to help them out. It's not going to work, okay? We really need support on clarity and transparency about this particular transaction because the lungs of our community in Studio City are not open for a big giant toxic doormat and an arena next to a fire station. Following.
Caller, your time has expired.
Alright, that concludes our public comment for today's, uh, meeting. What is available for us to vote on?
Mr. President, Council may now vote on items fourteen and fifteen, sir.
Alright, items fourteen and fifteen are before us, members. Open the roll on items fourteen and fifteen. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen, ayes.
Alright, what's next?
Next is item six and that was amended by Councilmember Padilla and seconded by Councilmember Hernandez.
Alright, do we need to read the amendment into the record?
No, sir, it was read in, uh, to the record by Councilmember Padilla at before public comment, sir.
Alright, as that's a friendly amendment, we can open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen, ayes.
Alright, what's next?
Next is item eleven and that was called special by Councilmember Hernandez.
Alright. Item number, uh, eleven is before us. We'll begin our deliberation of this item with Councilmember Hernandez of the first council district.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I remain very concerned about this project and especially around the overwhelming feedback from my constituents that there has not been adequate opportunity for community participation. Many of the questions that we have asked and that the public has asked throughout this week still have not been answered adequately. As I have said repeatedly throughout this week, Westlake is not a community that rejects housing or density. It is just the opposite. This is a community that has repeatedly said yes, year after year, project after project. Within five blocks of the Mayfair, there are four permanent supportive housing buildings. There are fourteen affordable housing developments serving or plan to serve low income or formerly homeless individuals there. There are also about a hundred and fifty unsheltered residents living in the same five blocks. And what my community is being told that, um, and what my community is being told is that the city has over eighty million dollars to spend on purchasing and renovating a hotel in their backyard to provide three hundred rooms of interim housing and yet not a single one of those rooms will be available to the people who are living unsheltered just feet away from the entrance. There's no clear timeline for the long-term operations of this hotel, nor is clear how the services will be funded upon the expiration of the encampment grant resolution. In committee this week, I introduced an amendment to address the concerns my constituents have uplifted, asking the city to identify the funding and programs to provide the necessary municipal services that will set this program up for success, including cleaning and street lighting, support for local businesses, and asking that the mayor's office work with CD one to bring our unhoused community members in the area directly surrounding the Mayfair into housing. And this experience has been a very clear reminder that our boss, my boss, uh, for this district are the community members. However, after hearing today's discussion, I remain concerned and I'm introducing an additional amendment to this report which will add instructions to ensure that when the encampment resolution grant expires or funding is expended, beds at the Mayfair will be able to be, uh, used to provide housing for unhoused residents in CD one. I believe that we need more interim and permanent supportive housing in Los Angeles and that every neighborhood, every neighborhood in our city and every district in our city has to play a role in solving, in solving our housing and homelessness crisis. And it's one of the reasons why I'm supporting this. I know firsthand just how desperately we need more beds because my district and my unhoused constituents, including those who live in the area surrounding this hotel, are suffering every day from the lack of available units. Literally, we're having to call around to other districts and places to try to find beds because we just don't have them. This debate is not about rejecting the housing that we desperately need, please be clear about that. It's about providing our communities with the resources to truly make projects like this one successful and digestible. It's about bringing a care-first approach and equipping our interim housing projects with the funding, programs and services they need to actually serve our future, their future clients with dignity. It's about ensuring that there are true pathways to permanent supportive housing for our unhoused residents. My hope is that just as we provide wraparound services for our individuals and families who are in need of care, we can also wrap around the community that surrounds this hotel. A community that too often has been overlooked and underserved by our city. I believe that we can lead the way in showing Angelenos that when they say yes to housing in their neighborhoods, that their city meets them with the support and the services they need for their communities and neighborhoods to thrive. That our neighbors who are unhoused will benefit from the units being opened in their own neighborhood. That we will commit to preventing harm, not just reacting to it, to building community, to providing pathways for community input and discussion because this is the first of several projects and we need community engagement, true community engagement. And I hope that gets better in the future. I hope that a holistic, trauma-informed approach that adequately serves both the future residents of interim housing sites and the members of the surrounding community can be the model for the future. With that, I would like to read my amending language into the record. I move that the matter of the several, is it okay if I read into the record, City Attorney?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great, thank you. I move that the matter of the several committee reports relative to funding allocation, site acquisition, minor renovations, lease or similar agreement and operations, and operation as temporary shelter of the property located at twelve fifty-six West Seventh Street. Item number eleven on today's council agenda, CF two-three dash zero seven nine two, be amended to require that any contracts, leases or other agreements regarding this property between the Office of the Mayor, LASSA, service providers or any other relevant entities memorialize the condition that following the expiration of the California State Encampment Resolution Grant, which will supplement operations for two years, bed availability at the site will be prioritized for, while not exclusively reserved for unhoused constituents in Council District One, while the site continues to support citywide needs. Thank you.
And I'll second that. I'll second. Okay, Mr. Blumenfeld seconds, alright, uh, Councilmember Park.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I personally have deep concerns about the fiscal prudence and the long-term feasibility of owning and operating a nearly three hundred unit hotel as interim housing. And I am not actually convinced that any of us have a real grasp on what the actual maintenance, service and programming costs are going to be going forward. I also hear loud and clear the concerns of the community, the neighbors and the businesses about the lack of outreach and the sordid history of this site when it was operated as a project room key with little oversight or attention to the quality of life of residents. I have personally lived through this in Venice. So I know what it's like to live in and now to represent a community where the city's promises to neighbors about bridge housing were broken. And I can tell you that when promises like that are broken, it is hard to come back. Trust becomes thin among residents if there's any left at all. And that makes things more difficult for all of us as we try to bring housing interventions online. Councilwoman Hernandez, I applaud your courage and I want you to succeed. In fact, everyone in this room and around the horseshoe and our entire city needs you to succeed. You were elected to lead your constituents through hard decisions like this one and because of your support for this project and the accountability amendments that you introduced and because I believe that you are the right person to guide us through the decision, I am going to vote yes with you today, even though I personally still have a lot of questions and concerns. I also, though, want you to know that if at some point down the road, this doesn't work, I'm going to have your back then too. If you need to make changes, if you want to try something else, if you need help to make any of it work better, I'm going to support you. You and every member of Council District One are stepping up for the potential benefit of the entire city. And if we approve this today, all of us must ensure that the promises we are making to the neighbors are kept and that the investment that we are making sets the standard for what every community should expect of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, Ms. Hernandez, you know, we got to sit on the joint committee, uh, hearing this item. And your advocacy is you doing exactly what the people of the first council manic district elected you to do. What frustrates me and disappoints me about what all of this process has entailed is something that not a single member of this council, nor any community should ever have to grapple with. But for me, what was most frustrating is the lack of clarity, the financials associated with the acquisition, the speed with which we're trying to accelerate and get this thing through, not availing any time for the community to actually be heard. Any one of us would fight for our community to be heard and have adequate conversations and that has not been exercised in this process. And that is not at your hands. But I feel very strongly about it because if we enable that environment, then we're saying it's okay depending on what location of the city that this happens to. I just have frustrations because it always feels that it's the same community that bears the burden. We see it across the city of Los Angeles and there are certain communities that are veiled far more opportunities to provide community input than what's happened in the Pico Union Westlake area. And that for me is very problematic. The other part of what I find most offensive with this in terms of the lack of, uh, financial, uh, outlook is that we're saddling ourselves with an obligation for providing services and frankly, you know, the fact that we still don't even have clarity as to whether or not the operations are fully inclusive of the services that are already being provided to the individuals at the LA Grand. We don't know dollar for dollar whether or not we're getting the same deal because that has not been communicated to us effectively. So we don't really know that this is a better deal. There's still a lot of outstanding issues that have not been addressed. And it has been a continued, uh, trust us conversation that I cannot saddle our future, as a, as a member of the Budget Committee, uh, as a member of this body, I cannot saddle this city with future obligations with unknown costs. As it is, the proposal to purchase this property is based on having already cut an eleven million dollar check for repairs that are needed and required as a result of the operations during Project Room Key uh, that were at the time managed by the very same provider that we're talking about managing today. And yet those repairs aren't being completed before we propose taking acquisition of this property and having to then fulfill the very same, uh, repairs that we already settled in advance, we're paying twice. So I have very, uh, I, I, you know, it just, it. I am no stranger to building PSH in my district, I am no stranger to, uh, to making the very difficult decisions. I remember when I was very, first elected and we were having an emergency winter shelter in my district. I had protesters of, of, uh, kindergartners and families because of the terrible operations of a site in Pacoima. The only emergency shelter for the entire San Fernando Valley was in Pacoima. And so it was there that the good neighbor policy was born. I made a promise to my community that said, I will make sure that the operations are right and that you're not exposed and that the kids of our neighborhoods are not exposed to this. That's why I created the good neighbor policy. It's why I suggested having a hotline to provide residents the opportunity to call and report so that we don't just have a trust us environment. We have to have accountability from this, to this, on the service provider, but also this city. And we need to know where the problems are, we need to know that we need to act swiftly to address, regardless of what neighborhood it's in. Every neighborhood in Los Angeles deserves those protections, every, when we say yes, we say it with the caveat of we're protecting every single neighborhood and we're going to do it responsibly. So for that, I commend you for the courage to do this. Uh, I, I think, I don't, I really am, um, disappointed that this is in fact the process. I, uh, it, it's, lacks the full transparency that I believe we need to make sizable investments to this scale. There is far more diligence, due diligence that we do when we do these types of projects, particularly when we talk about an expenditure this large. And for that reason, uh, while I continue to support all the amendments that you've advocated for to ensure the protections and the operations are well executed and that we hold everybody associated with the operation of this facility accountable because I will be right there with you, I will show up on that doorstep alongside with you to make sure that there, everyone is doing their job. But I cannot support in good conscience this project and this acquisition. Thank you.
Councilmember Blumenfeld.
Thank you. Uh, first, I really want to uplift Councilwoman Hernandez, this is in her district and she has really done yeoman's work to try to both land this plane, to make it work for her constituents. plane, make it work for her constituents, to create an asset that we need in terms of homelessness, and to try and navigate that. And that is not an easy task, especially given the timing of this, that this is all very rushed because we have this deadline coming where if we don't act before the deadline, the opportunity is lost. So I know it's been very difficult, and I want to uplift that. And together with Ms. Hernandez, she and I put in more than 20 different amendments to this proposal to create more accountability, to create a better understanding of where some of these financial questions, asking for report backs. I think between us, we did in more than two dozen different amendments, all with that in mind. And I also want to...you know, I seconded her motion, which was the motion to see if we can't make this interim site prioritize the district, to allow a certain number of the rooms to be priority for the district. That's how we do it with all the other interim sites. The sites in our districts, we allow the local folks, because in order to have the community embrace something, they want to know that a big part of it is going to be helping get the folks off the immediate streets that are suffering but are also causing issues in that community into a better environment. Now, in this particular project, because of the way the funding stream works, you can't really do that in the first two years, in part because it's relying on a $60 million encampment grant, which is specifically targeted towards Skid Row. Ms. Hernandez understands that, but says, "Yeah, that...okay, we understand that for two years, but after that two years, there's got to be a way to prioritize our local community." And there is a way to do that. And her motion is not prescriptive. It doesn't say exactly this number of rooms or this way to do it. It says, "We're going to figure it out. We're going to have some priority for our local folks. We're still going to have citywide folks coming into this site," which is different than a lot of our interim sites where that's not even allowed. So that's a step further. But this is a very big site, and this is a lot of city money going into it, so it's appropriate. It's appropriate that it prioritizes her district, but that it also serves the entire city and particularly our most difficult areas in Skid Row, which is nearby. So that, I think, is a very positive amendment as a final amendment on top of the two dozen other ones that we did in committee. And we have...there were a lot of questions on this. I spent a lot of time digging in, as did many of my colleagues, because I'm both on the Homeless and Housing Committee, where we had over four hours' worth of hearing. I was looking over at Chairwoman Rahm, but she's not there. And then on the Budget and Finance Committee, where we did the same thing, but really focused in on the budget issues. And I also want to address, I mean, the issue with the $11 million in damages. I was very concerned about that as well. It feels painful that we spent with Project Room Key $11 million, and the hotel itself didn't actually make those repairs. It's kind of like car insurance, when if your car gets hit and you get that check from the insurance company, they don't care if you do the repairs or not. Unfortunately, that's how it worked with Project Room Key. But that doesn't mean that we're going to have to spend $11 million on repairs moving forward. We really went through this in committee, because those repairs are sort of the high-end repairs that are done, you know, expensive ottomans and TV sets. Those things can be replaced from, you know, from Costco at a much lower price so that the damages will more reflect the typical Project Room Key. And then it's important to note, too, as we drill down on that, that those damages are reflected in the fair market value. So the fair market value of this project is, you know, lower than it would be if they spent that $11 million on...if they spent that $11 million making that project fixing all those things, then the fair market value would be higher, and we would be paying more money. So in a sense, that it's unfortunate. I wish we hadn't spent that money. I wish there was a way that we could have avoided that. But there are multiple...you know, there are different tracks. That's the Project Room Key track. And unfortunately, in this case, that ship sailed. Didn't sail that long ago. We spent that part of that money fairly recently, but that was an obligation that was through Project Room Key, and it was an issue that we explored in committee. So I'm supporting this project. I still have a lot of financial questions. Those of you who suffered through all of my questions in committee know that I asked a lot of questions, which sometimes, okay, I do. But it's a good thing, hopefully. During the roast, I got made fun of for that, but that's okay. But the point is, at the end of the day, we need housing. We need interim housing. The streets cannot be the waiting room for permanent supportive housing, and this is a major step forward. It allows us to leverage HUD funds that we may...we're having difficulty leveraging. No one wants to see HUD money turned back to the feds when it can be used. And yes, it's a lot of money. It is a step forward. We are going to need to be holding this accountable. We also need to hold the service provider accountable. And Wygarden Foundation came forward in committee, and I was very impressed with their presentation. They talked about not just serving the inside of the facility, but actually doing, you know, doing the outside of the facility and walking around, making sure that it doesn't become a magnet for encampments, which is something that not all service providers do, unfortunately, that they think they all should do, which is why, building on what Councilwoman Rodriguez said, I had a motion about a Good Neighbor Policy, and that motion is coming through committee. But we took the substance of that Good Neighbor Policy, and we inserted it into this deal via amendment, which was one of the 24 different amendments, which makes a lot of sense, and I'm pleased that that's not a big stretch for the foundation because they've already committed to doing those things. So for all of those reasons, I am supporting this, and I urge an eye vote.
Councilmember Soto Martinez for an announcement.
Yes, thank you so much, Council President. I'd just like to announce to the public and to my colleagues that we're pushing back Creed or Civil Rights Committee till 2:00. Thank you.
All right, and in order to take a vote that includes Councilwoman Hernandez's motion just a few minutes ago, we're opening public comment, so folks can sign up now. And once we hear from the remaining members on the queue, we will open up public comment. If there are any folks speaking there that want to speak, we'll hear from them. Mr. De Leon. Mr. De Leon, no more disruptions. You'll be asked to leave the meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, as well as the public, I want to give a special recognition and a thank you to Governor Gavin Newsom, because that's why we're here discussing this issue with regards to the encampment grant that has been provided by the state of California. I want to also give a special recognition to Mayor Karen Bass, as well as her team, for initiating the decompression, things that we have been speaking about for years, if not decades. And this is important to understand because when Councilwoman Jan Perry had Skid Row, when Mr. Lindsay had Skid Row, when Ms. Rita Walters had Skid Row, there have been years of discussion of decompression, but it's just been rhetoric. Finally, the mayor is moving this forward, and I want to recognize that. I want to also recognize Councilwoman Eunice Hernandez, too, for stepping up, because this is not easy by no stretch of the imagination. We have done numerous projects like this in City 14, and it's not simple. So I do want to recognize her stepping up on this issue. One thing I want to highlight, which I think is very important, perhaps for the mayor's staff, a good majority of inside safe locations are located in poor, black, and brown, low-income neighborhoods. In fact, closer to 70% of inside safe are geographically located in low-income neighborhoods. So that goes kind of the opposite of when we talk about equity for communities that are suffering greatly. I know the MacArthur Park, Pico Union area extremely well, because I used to live right across the street from MacArthur Park. It is the densest part of the city of LA. And with drug use and drug selling, you see all the Beamers and all the Audis and all the Porsches coming from other parts of the town in Pico Union and Westlake, MacArthur Park area, that is not a good thing, because it compounds the poverty even more so for residents who live there. So I commend Eunice Hernandez for the number of amendments that she has moved forward. Obviously, her and her staff are going to have to really work through this in real time as you move forward with the mayor's staff to make sure that each amendment, in fact, is followed through on, specifically because what's on paper is one thing, and what's an amendment is another thing. What actually happens on the ground in real time, that's something that's altogether dramatically different. So I do want to recognize that, you know, very much, given the crisis that we're dealing with. I know that the Joint Committee with...in the Budget and Finance yesterday had a thorough, thorough discussion on the finances. I heard Mr. Rodriguez speak, as well as Mr. Blumenfeld, on the finance as well. I have a lot of questions. I'm not going to get into them at all whatsoever, because I think they were thoroughly discussed and communicated clearly. The price tag, I think it would be really good for the next, whatever acquisition is going to be, beforehand, we sort of kind of worked this through, because on the price point per unit is going to have to get a little lower. And the last thing I'm going to have to say is this, yeah, it should get lower, because it's extremely high, because I don't know why you don't change the word interim into permanent, because if that was a permanent price per unit at $285, it would be really acceptable unquestionably in comparison to HHH, which is $800,000 per unit and above. But, you know, I'd like to have that discussion, you know, that we can have it later on right there, but that is a really important point right there, because our price per unit, and we have doubled the units that we have created so far, comes around $100K. And what blows our numbers a little higher are the acquisitions of two hotels, tightens in, and the super rate, that blows my number a little higher on the methodology. But, you know, this is something that we can discuss further. But again, I just want to give the recognition where it's due, you know, to Gavin Newsom because of the grants and our colleagues up in the state capital, to the mayor Karen Bass and her team for moving forward with the decompression, and to Councilwoman Eunice Hernandez for the difficulty of helping to help lead this, to land this here as we move forward. It's the beginning of many, many projects we're going to have to figure out as we move forward. But to the point that Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Blumenfeld has made, we're going to have to do a much, much better job in terms of the price point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. De Leon. Mr. McCosker.
Thank you very much. First of all, I appreciate all of the time we spent in Budget and Finance yesterday. I had a number of questions. I continue to have a number of questions. I think many of us do. I want to also thank the council member, Eunice Hernandez, for doing the best with a very difficult situation, finding yourself in a position that you had to respond to and responding with leadership and with courage. I appreciate that. I also appreciate Councilmember Park's comments. I join her that we all want each of our members to be successful. We certainly want this to be successful, and I, too, will have your back. But I continue to have the concern, and it's been played out right here in this discussion, we have a couple of dozen amendments, several reports back, on a project which will be a dramatic change in policy, a monumental and important change in policy, a change in policy that we should make, but we should have a policy when we make it. And we do not have a policy. And I do not want to put myself in a position where I'm talking about policy and having it sort of overtake the importance of the most important humanitarian crisis happening in our lifetime. But we do need a policy. We need to know where we're going. We often talk about, in government, very often, we say we're building the plane as we're flying it. And sometimes that's appropriate. Often, that's appropriate. But sometimes, the passengers are critically, critically important. And we have a lot of the most important passengers involved in this flight. And I just feel that we are not ready for takeoff. And I feel like we need to work with...and I so appreciate the mayor, and I so appreciate every single actor from Sacramento to our neighborhoods who are all saying, "Let's figure this out. Let's do it." But I have to be a no today, and I will be a no. And I know where this is going. I also know where this is going. So while I'm a no, I'm also fully and completely committed to each of the amendments, and I think these amendments need to become informative. And unfortunately, the flight, while we're building this plane, needs to be informative for where we go in the future, because it is too important. It's too important for me to vote yes, and I'm not saying that it's not important to you. If you vote yes, I understand. We're all in this together. But today, I'm going to remain intellectually consistent with where I was over the last few days, and I'm going to be a no. So thank you.
All right. We have two speakers on the queue for public comment, so we'll go to that at this moment.
First caller, please go ahead.
Thanks. It's Eric Previn. I think it has to be slowed down and lights turned on. It's a very tough situation, and I take note of Blumenfeld's remarks about the $11 million that was paid to these Room Key characters to fix the place up, and now we're paying twice. I think Rodriguez said we have to...that is a disgusting detail, okay? The fact that insurance, you don't have to fix the car. We're not going to buy...they have to put the money on the screen. I mean, that is just...they're just...these hotel companies are ripping people off, okay? It's not appropriate. This is a lot of public money. So once again, thank you to Councilmember De Leon and Governor Newsom. Both of them deserve a lot of gratitude on this. Just thank you for all their work. No, but I mean, this is very, very hard for unisys, but we'll get it right. And I think it's very important that Mr. McCosker has outlined the airplane analogy to its...we have to double-check the fly, but good work. Thank you.
And as a reminder to everybody who's signing up for public comment on this item, this is for item 11 only. We are reopening public comment, so you will have one minute for item 11 only.
Next caller, please go ahead.
Ms. Hernandez, again, keep the fight. Make it great and persuade those people to vote for you, because in our leader, Mr. Six, when I ran for this office, it wasn't because I was a politician, but I know my community. They didn't want the senior citizen home built here. They didn't want it. They thought it was going to be for the homeless, and they're building it. It's twice the time on the calendar, and again, twice over budget. That's 80 units, 9120 Woodman Avenue. I care for it because it helps the people transition from the hospital, not to the street. Now, if it's going to be a homeless encampment, it needs to serve your community the way it should. Three-quarters of those people should be invested in your District One. It should be that way or no way at all. Let it be that or nothing at all, because if you're going to go ahead, gentrification starts all over again. Let's get the people that need it what they need, not the people that want it. God bless you all. Vote with Ms. Hernandez. Let it happen.
Caller, your time has expired.
Next caller, please go ahead.
Mayor Bass is running our city to the ground. Everyone is learning that Mayor Bass is shaping to be a terrible mayor. This is not anti anything, just plain observation. Just look at the streets. No hotel in CD5 the council voted...
Caller, I'm going to ask that you tie this to the item. This is the...we are only taking public comment on item 11.
No hotel in CD5 the council voted, but the homeless...
This caller is not on topic. If you can't get on topic, we're going to move on.
...homeless on CD1, but no hotel in CD5. I am on topic. The Mayfair is fishy business. Hernandez, the mayor, and Westside City Council members are putting one over on you. This increases the CD1 population, leaving fewer resources for your constituents. Concentrating homeless in ghetto motels is not the solution. What a shame. 4118 should read, "The homeless must live 500 feet around councilmember homes until they create quality jobs that will allow people to afford horrible housing and receive proper medical attention. Lower taxes and reduce red tape to stimulate the economy. Create quality jobs so people can afford..."
Speaker, your time has expired.
All right, that concludes public comment on this item. Before I give the floor back to Ms. Hernandez to close, I just wanted to thank all the members for our deliberations in this process. Some of us spent 10 hours in hearings between homelessness and housing and Budget and Finance, and I know the council offices and the mayor. Please stop disrupting the meeting. We don't have you on the queue. We've exhausted the queue that we see.
Please do not interrupt the meeting. Hold on just one minute.
All right. The advice from the city attorney is that we take folks who want to speak. We'll give five minutes for in-person public comment. We don't have, your names are, for some reason, not your fault, your names are not appearing on our queue, so we'll just ask you to line up and come forward, and you'll have one minute to speak on the amendment.
Good afternoon. So you have one minute for item number 11.
Hi, good afternoon. I live right across the street from the Mayfair, and I just want to say this. I know the Wine Guard group did have a really pretty presentation, wrapped all nicely in ribbons, told us all exactly what we want to hear, but I really urge you guys to think about the logical feasibility of the project. Is this something that is possible? Do you have stats of their success rates? Do you have the numbers for previous projects that they already have open, right? Almost every single council member here today has mentioned that they still have questions and concerns, and I don't understand how you can make an informed decision without having all the stats, the numbers, the answers, and without community outreach. I have been a part of this fight from the moment I heard about it, and I have not once seen, you know, representation from council member in this district. I haven't seen any questions be asked of the residents, so can't move forward without an informed decision.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Couple corrections, please. Mr. De Leon was wrong about the history of the city council. First of all, Jan Perry never had this district.
So, Mr. Sacks, this is about item 11 only?
He was talking about the amendment, excuse me, Mr. City Attorney. Kevin De Leon got up and spoke about this.
This is only on the Hernandez amendment.
Oh, okay. It's a grant for 20 years from the state of California. Grants are for 20 years. The history of the city council dealing with this project is completely wrong. I don't understand. You're talking about Project Room Key when you're using key cards. It's really, really important. The most important part of the agenda are the periods, L, period, A, period. It's Los Angeles, Los Angeles. It's not La La Land. You just need to understand that.
That's your time. Thank you. Next speaker.
So they're artificially shortening the time, not letting all the speakers speak on this special item, saying it's only going to be allowed five minutes, so that's pretty ridiculous. This item, I don't even remember the amendment, because we blew through this shit so fucking fast, and there was all these different amendments. But I think it's really sad that we don't do what we need to be doing for the community. We just make, we just rubber stamp shit, pass it through, everybody comes out here, speaks against it, and then we just sit here on our phones, like Unisis, like, like Price, like, everybody, just sitting there, not even paying attention, while the public speaks their mind and their hearts out, which is pretty sad. We don't need interim housing. We need permanent housing. We don't need to be giving money away or taking money for bribes and throwing it around this way and that way. The community tells you what they want, what they need. You need to live and serve the community, not your developer interests and your little fucking side gigs that you have going on that you refuse to tell anybody about and recuse yourselves from, the meetings regarding. Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker. This is your time.
Hi. I live across the street from the Mayfair Hotel. And SLR owns the Wine Guard. They're terrible landlords. I lived in the Rosan Hotel for four and a half years prior to my current residency. And the problems we had there are nothing like what they're saying. They didn't manage the property correctly. They allow tenants to stand outside or sit outside at the front of buildings, selling cigarettes, selling drugs, prostitution. And when the elevators go out in a 15-story building, like at the former residency I lived in, when they go out, they stay out for like two, three weeks a month. How can tenants in a 15-story building function when they have no elevator? And the children that live in the neighborhood go to three schools within.
Thank you. That's your time. Next speaker.
Okay, political theater is okay, but we know what's going on here. You can't go now and then ask questions later. That's not the way you run a proper business model. You are in the business to manage our funds. It is not your funds. We have a program called LA Repair that's going to be for disadvantaged communities, yet you're bringing the disadvantage to us. You have not alerted our first responders, you have not alerted the Latinos in the community, and you've not alerted the police. How are they going to manage this capacity of people? This is Westlake. It's already been said that in two years, the funds will be gone. So how do you expect, in two years, you're going to reevaluate and see if we can help people in Westlake? These people are not in our community. Elections are coming very soon, guys. This is your David and Goliath moment. Be, be the David that's, that's strong and bold, that'll make the right decision, because this is going to impact us, and it's going to go to all the surrounding communities. I go to church at Shepherd in Porter Ranch. I have a large community there. They're going to hear about what's going on here. So make the wise decision, because everybody's going to see the impact about this. And you can laugh all you want, Unisis, but you, we don't live in Highland Park. This is Westlake, okay? This is Pico Union. We have to deal with the granite things. We are not.
Thank you so much. That's your time.
Hi, my name is Zungat Gada. My family and I have been next to the Mayfair for the last 25 years, since 1998. I want to speak to Unisis directly, but I echo everything that Councilwoman Rodriguez said. I think we need more time to think this through. I implore you to vote no on this, so that the community can speak to you directly, because I don't think we've had enough time. It's only been a handful of us that have spoken to you, but there are so many people, if you came to our district, to our area in, in your district, and spoke to people on the streets, you would find that most people do not want this to happen. It's just rushing through something that caused so much commotion and danger in our community for the two years when Wine Guard Center was running the Mayfair. So we already know from experience that they're not capable of doing it. There are promises being made, but we don't know if they can actually fulfill them. And I know that Tracy Park had also mentioned that we, in Venice, they experienced the same thing. So let's, let's slow down. We're rushing through something that doesn't need to be rushed. This is a lot of money, and we need to think carefully of how we do it. So please, vote no, because everyone also follow your vote.
Thank you. So we're speaking now on the item, because we had an amendment. I think it's really interesting during Mr. Blumenfeld's remarks, he mentioned that he, he regretted that the, the council voted, or that they voted to pay for the damages, because had they not paid for the damages previously caused when this hotel was under Project Room Key, they would have been able to acquire the building at a lower market value. Really just saying the quiet part out loud. That's, that's exactly what you said, Mr. Blumenfeld. Had we not funded that 11 million for repairs, we'd be able to acquire at a better market value, because that increased the fair market rate. That's exactly what you said. We should amend this to say permanent housing instead of interim housing, or one of you should move to continue the item for 30 to 60 days, so that you can actually get the public's actual input, instead of this last-minute piecemeal rush it through. You can give us more time for this.
Thank you so much. That concludes in-person and virtual public comment. We will close discussion on this item by hearing from Ms. Hernandez, who I want to give a huge compliment, along with Mr. Blumenfeld, who just worked this and worked this and worked this. There was every, as you've heard here, there was every opportunity, there was every reason, there was every rationale to say no, or to just back away and say, not today, tomorrow, or not at all, or not in my backyard, or any of those things. And to watch you all press and press and press, 10 hours of hearings, late-night discussions, back and forth figuring out, I just think it's an example to all of us on this council for the kind of commitment it makes to come up with a solution. I also want to thank all the members, but especially Ms. Park for her comments. The fact that we have to put motions up to say that the street has to stay clean, and that our laws that we already have on the books, that's a ridiculous situation, whether or not we do this, this project or not. And so, like Ms. Park, like Mr. McCosker, like all of the members who have spoken, I will have your back, because I live in a part of the city where the city has said over and over, we'll do this, we'll do that, and you look up six months later and nobody's home. And you can't get an answer to your question, you can only get excuses for why it isn't done. And so, I want to personally bear witness to that reality and commit to, with you and all the members of this council, to changing it, and making it, making this a place where neighborhoods can count on their city government. And with that, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, deepest, deepest gratitude to you, all of you, for speaking up, for voting in the ways that you are, but speaking up about it. Grateful for that. This is the first of several acquisitions that are happening, and Westlake community, CD1 residents and constituents, I'm not going to just let this go. I'm not going to just let them do what they want to do and continue the process that has been rolling through with real lack of community engagement. I promise you that, right here, right now, I will not. I will hold all the stakeholders accountable, including the mayor's office and the mayor's team that has been rolling this through, and not in the best way. And so I look forward to moving with all of you in a better direction in implementation, but I have to be very clear, I'm not going to let my community down. I just wanted to make that very clear to everybody, because this is a big lift. This is 300 rooms, potential double occupancy. We are not playing. I am not playing. So please, with potential, Jenna, potential for more people. And so, I just want to be clear with that, that I'm excited about how things are moving forward. I still have a lot of concerns, but I'm not going to take the gas off of it and in implementation as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. So what is before us?
Mr. President, the vote now is on Amendment 11A, and that is motion Hernandez, Blumenfeld.
All right. Amendment 11A. Ms. Hernandez is asking for an I-vote on her amendment. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right. What's next?
The next vote, sir, is the Budget and Finance Committee report, the Joint Housing and Homelessness and Government Operations Committee report, as amended by amending motion 11A, Hernandez, Blumenfeld.
All right. So this is the motion as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 2 noes.
All right. What's next?
The last vote is the vote to request to send this matter to the mayor urgent fourth wish, sir.
All right. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
All right. Thank you. What's next?
Next would be item number one, and that was called special for an amendment.
All right. Do we have that amendment? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I must recuse myself from this item on advice of the city.
All right. For the record, Mr.
Because I do own some real estate.
Excellent. For the record, Mr. Price is recusing himself on this item.
And then also, CD2 is also recusing because of his rental properties.
So council members, Council President Kocorian and Councilmember Price are recusing themselves on this item, and we have an amendment before us that has to be read into the record. All right. We have a quick announcement. Per Council President Kocorian, Rules Committee will commence at 2:00 PM, as opposed to All right. We have an amendment by Councilmember Hutt, on behalf of Councilmember Ramon.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of my councilmember colleague, Ramon, I move item one on today's agenda, CF 23078, 0738, be amended to include the following additional instructions. In instructions, number one, add the words "feedback from stakeholders, including property owners, tenants," and, so instruct the Los Angeles Housing Department, with the assistance of the CAO and CLA, to report in 60 days with the recommendations to require lead and mold inspections as a part of the SECP, beginning July 1, 2025. The report should include feedback from stakeholders, including property owners and tenants, and an analysis of any personal, any personnel or changes needed to the L.A. Housing Department Regulatory Code and Compliance Bureau to implement the recommendation.
All right. I'll second that amendment.
Anything else, Mr. Attorney?
No. That satisfies the requirement, so we can open the roll on this item as amended. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right. We have one more item before us.
Yes, sir. The next vote is on item number 13, sir.
All right. Ms. Rodriguez?
I'd like to amend to move to disapprove, please.
Excellent. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, can open the roll. Oh, yes, that's right. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right. What's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those motions are posted and referred. Any announcements, members? Ms. Rodriguez?
I just want to wish all my colleagues happy Great 18 Day.
There it is.
This is a day to celebrate the San Fernando Valley, and so I want to invite all my colleagues, if you haven't been to probably the best heat you would ever find in the city of Los Angeles, come visit us out. Mr. Blumenfeld is the hottest point of the San Fernando Valley in the city, so if you'd like to come out, enjoy everything that the San Fernando Valley has to offer. We have wonderful communities that make up the San Fernando Valley, and we want to invite you all out to come out and enjoy some of what we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto Martinez.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just want to invite everyone, this Sunday, we're going to be having.
One of those days, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you so much. This Sunday, we're going to be having a Ciclavia, and it's going to be called Hollywood Meets Koreatown, so we're going to be connecting CD 13 and CD 10. It will be from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Now, we know there is a hurricane that's coming around, but please look at the social media for any updates. As of now, it is still planned, but we want to be safe, and if we happen to postpone it, we will do that. As you all know, Ciclavia, this Ciclavia will be a five-mile stretch, I think connecting two of the best districts in the city of Los Angeles. And as someone who loves to bike, sorry, no offense, Mr. McCosker, as someone who likes to bike, I think it's important to, to get out, get on your wheels, your rollerblades, your skateboard, whatever that may be, every time we do it, it's an amazing time, and I hope to see you all there. And then I have a second announcement that I will be doing in a minute.
All right. Other announcements, members? Ms. Hutt, you have a Ciclavia? You want to announce?
Yeah. It's the, it's Bloody August, baby. It's been a rough. This is a Ciclavia 1310, 1013, you know? 10 goes with everything, right? Right? So we're excited about it. I'll be out there early in the morning on Saturday. And then, I have another announcement that I don't have a thing for, but on Sunday, you know, the weather permitting, Los Angeles High School is celebrating 150 years, and that's really exciting. My mom went there, so it's a big deal to me, so we'll be out there at 11 o'clock. I'm going to ride my bike down to L.A. I'm going to ride my bike down to L.A. Highs.
So eleven o'clock on Sunday, the one-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of our beloved Los Angeles High School. All right, Mr. Soto Martinez?
Thank you so much, Council President. Can I have my friend and colleague Jesse Alston-Mutman please come up? You're going to be on TV today. So today is a sad day for myself and the office, because we're losing a guy who has been with me, at least since day one, since I decided to run for office. I met Jesse about, over two years ago.
Hold on, Mr. Soto Martinez. To the three people by the second pillar from the back on the east side of the building, we need you to be quiet right now or leave the room. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, so Jesse and I have known each other for a few years, both as activists and organizers in District thirteen, but a lot of folks don't know the role that he played, not only helping me win the seat, but also taking down the fence at Echo Park Lake. Jesse was the main person, yeah, thank you for the applause, Jesse was the main person talking to the different advocates, the organizers, the unhoused, to make, doing door-knocking and bringing the community in, to make sure that we told the public that we don't have to choose between caring for the unhoused and having a beautiful safe park, that we can actually do both. And so, he was with us throughout that entire process. Jesse is probably, has used the most Simpson quotes than anyone in City Hall ever in the history of Los Angeles. We are sad to have him leave, but this is not a goodbye. As you all know, who've been activists and organizers, it's a very small world. We'll see each other in different fights and different paths, but on behalf of the city of Los Angeles and entire CD thirteen family, I would like to present Jesse Alston-Mutman with a recognition for all the amazing work he did with my team. Thank you so much.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service. Other announcements? All right, seeing no further announcements, I'll ask that everybody in the chamber rise for adjourning motions. Any adjourning motions on this side of the room? All right, seeing none, any adjourning motions on this side of the room? Mr. Blumenfeld?
Thank you. I rise today to adjourn in the memory of Gene Gaines, who passed away Tuesday, July fourth, twenty twenty-three, and we're joined by Ellen, the family, here. Gene was a member of our city family, but before I get to that, let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Gaines and his accomplished life before he came to work here. Eugene Carver Gaines was born on June twenty-sixth, nineteen forty-three, in Laurel, Mississippi. He was one of seven brothers and one sister born to Isaac Gaines Senior and Beatrice Gaines. Gene attended David Starr Jordan Middle and High School. After graduating, he attended UCLA on a football scholarship and graduated with a degree in education. He married Marion Backstrom on October fourth, nineteen fifty-nine, at All Peoples Christian Church in Los Angeles. They were blessed with three children, Ellen, who is here, Eugene Junior, and Elaine. They were happily married for fifty-four years until Marion's passing. As a result of his incredible college football career, Gene Gaines was selected by the San Diego Chargers in nineteen sixty-one, but he opted to play in the Canadian Football League. As a member of the Ottawa Roughriders in nineteen sixty-two, he quickly made it home, as he would spend the next eight years of his illustrious career playing there. In nineteen seventy, Gene spent seven years with the Montreal Alouettes as a player and defensive backfield coach. You don't see that anymore. He played over two hundred games, and a hundred and sixty-one of them were consecutive, another unheard-of milestone nowadays. By the time he retired, Gene had left his mark on the Canadian Football League, leaving the game as a three-time All-Star, nineteen sixty-six East Division Most Outstanding Player of the Year, and he won back-to-back Grey Cups in nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen sixty-nine, and he still holds the record for the longest kickoff return in history, when he brought one back for a hundred and twenty-eight yards. To top it all off, Gene was inducted into the Canadian Football Hall of Fame in nineteen ninety-four and was later inducted into Ottawa's Wall of Honor just two months ago on the team's home opener. He was also honored as a member of the nineteen sixty-eight Grey Cup champions on their fiftieth anniversary, when my deputy chief, John Popach, ran into his colleague at the site of the celebration all the way out in Ottawa, Canada. They worked together for our Recreation and Parks Department at various rec centers and in some of the most needy communities of the city, along with Gene's daughter, Ellen, another longtime member of the city family, who is, again, right here with her family. John and my staff was thrilled to be by the collaboration with a football hero in Gene on trying to bring the best out of our youth and help them on a path of opportunity and success like the one that Gene took. Throughout his magnificent career, Gene managed to also be a member of the Air Force Reserve, where he was honorably discharged in nineteen sixty-seven. Since he was young, Gene accepted Jesus Christ, and later in his career was very active in the Athletes in Actions ministry. He would continue to be an active member of the Harbor Church here in Los Angeles, California. Mr. Gaines is survived by his three children, Ellen, Eugene, and his wife, Robin, Elaine and her husband, Robert, five grandchildren, Desiree, Sarah, Courtney, Keegan, and Kendall, three brothers, Harold and his wife, Inesia, Winslow and his wife, Alberta, Frank and his wife, Beverly, his sister, Beatrice, his sister-in-law, Sandy, as well as brothers-in-law, Warner, Don, and Vernell Backstrom. All of them loved him dearly. Gene will be deeply missed. May Gene Gaines rest in peace.
Thank you, and Mr. McCosker?
I would be honored to join in that adjournment, please.
Thank you. And may he rest in peace, and our condolences to you and your family. Thank you. Seeing no further adjourning motions, we are adjourned. See you next Tuesday.
... activity, because it is so complex, and you don't want to have to face it. But when you do, all these beautiful things come up, you know?
And we're trying to do that, and we've struggled with that over the years, and at times, you know, we've had issues where the difficult aspects of our past, the desire has been maybe just to wipe it away. We had a very difficult debate several years ago around Parker Center, the former LAPD headquarters in the city, and, you know, that was a site that, you know, was very important to the history of the LAPD and policing, but it had a very ugly past. Chief Parker himself was not, you know, progressive in his racial views, you know, certainly the practices of the LAPD during this period were harmful to many of the community-